Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for February 12, 2024. City Clerk, could you please do the roll?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutia.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Councilmember Lee, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Please rise and pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Injustice for all.
So we have one proclamation tonight being read by Councilmember Nguyen-House, Day of Action and Remembrance for Japanese-American Incarceration During World War II. And the recipient for that is Ren Watanabe. Go ahead, Councilmember Nguyen-House. We'll do a picture after we're done reading and Mr. Watanabe has spoken.
Good evening. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas February 19 marks the anniversary of President Franklin D. Roosevelt signing Executive Order 9066 in 1942, which authorized the United States government to create military exclusion areas, frequently referred to as internment camps, for Japanese-Americans living on the West Coast; and whereas more than 120,000 Japanese-Americans, including American citizens, and those born in the country, were forcibly removed from their homes and incarcerated in internment camps in remote inland parts of the continent; and whereas the well-documented cost was heavy, both emotionally and financially, with many Japanese-Americans losing their homes, their businesses, their property, and their savings; and whereas Bellevue lost a generation of Japanese-American residents with only 11 of the 60 families returning to the area after 1945; and whereas the United States government formally apologized for the internment policy in 1988 when President Ronald Reagan signed the Civil Liberties Act, offering survivors $20,000 in compensation; and whereas the community is invited to learn more about the Niki farmers of Bellevue and their experiences before, during, and after World War II through emerging radiance and interactive and immersive art experience acquired by the city of Bellevue in 2023, which will be on permanent display in the Bellevue Library starting in spring of 2024; and whereas the city of Bellevue honors and recognizes the tremendous value and contributions of our Japanese-American community and is committed to inclusion, to access, equity, and opportunity for all. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim February 19, 2024, as Day of Action and Remembrance for Japanese-American Incarceration During World War II in Bellevue, and urge our community to reflect on this unfortunate time in our nation's history. The city further reaffirms its commitment to protecting the civil rights of everyone in our community. I'd like to also add on that in honor of the Day of Remembrance, a national recognition of the unjust internment of Japanese-Americans during World War II, the city of Bellevue will host "Within the Silence," presented by Living Voices at City Hall on Thursday, February 22 between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. Community members are welcome to witness a very unique type of performance art exploring the way Americans of Japanese descent on the West Coast were interned at prison camps in remote areas of the Western United States from 1942 to 1945, when the war ended. Living Voices, based in Seattle, combines a live actor with archival footage to present key periods in history in a very dynamic and interactive way. "Within the Silence" tells the story of the Japanese-American internment through the story of a teenager named Imiko. After the performance, there will be a question-and-answer session with the performer. Thank you.
Come on up. Do you have something you'd like to say? Come up to the microphone, please. Yeah, and thank you for being here. You can sit down. Yeah.
So my name is Ren Watanabe. My grandparents and my great-grandparents were incarcerated during World War II, and so I think it is an absolute complete honor to be here for this acknowledgement. Growing up, I had learned all about the more personal stories about how my grandparents were impacted and the lessons that we learned. And so I think it is absolutely incredible to be seeing the Bellevue community honoring and, you know, learning from these lessons, since there is the great saying that history does not repeat itself, but it does often rhyme. And so my uncle just turned 101, and he served in the 442nd Regimental Combat Team during World War II. But I would like to thank you for this proclamation, and I'm very excited to see where Bellevue is heading towards with this. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ren. We're going to give you this and then have a picture with you, if we could? All right. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve today's meeting agenda.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're up to oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
This evening, there are nine pre-registered speakers. And before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules for the public. The total time for oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. Person speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will be coming in front of the council within the next 60 days. Speakers are allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Deidra Clayton.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. I'm here on behalf of Sophia Way and myself as a Bellevue resident. I'm in support of the Human Services Commission and you all. I actually wanted to share and should have some copies, if I have enough, some data for you. The Sophia Way, last year, was able to house 146 women. That's very exciting news. And on top of that, I would like to share last year's data of that 250,000 went directly to supporting clients. That means everywhere from tires from a car to be able to maintain stability to move in cost. So that's direct funding that actually went to clients. As you can see, that 42,000 nights of safety and stability were shared with our women, and it's very exciting. I'm just really here again to share this information and not to ask for anything but for you to continue to do the work and continue to keep your eye on the people that are less fortunate and unable to be here to speak. As you know, there's an increase in living wages, so at some other point, I will be here to talk about that. But for right now, thank you for all of the hard work that you've done and the support you've had to be able to make sure that we're serving the women experiencing homelessness on the East Side. Good night.
The next speaker is Kyle Sullivan.
Good evening. I'm here today to voice my support for improving bike infrastructure in Bellevue, including the Bike Bellevue Plan. I live in Kirkland currently, but I often come to Bellevue to visit businesses such as REI, Best Buy, Target, Wajamaya, and Mox Boarding House, all of which are along Bike Bellevue corridors. Being interested in bikes is a recent thing for me. I rode a bike to middle school and high school, but that was purely a practical decision. My parents both worked, we lived close to my schools, and walking would have taken too long. Since high school, I've taken most of my trips in a car, and that's still true today. In fact, I'm more of a car guy. I've been going to car shows with my dad since I was this high, and I have a degree in automotive repair, and I still work on cars as a hobby. However, I've come to realize that our dependency on cars for everyday life is a huge problem. Car trips make significant carbon emissions. According to city data, 30% of Bellevue's carbon emissions in 2021 were caused by passenger cars. Electric vehicles could reduce Bellevue's carbon emissions somewhat, but building EVs is carbon-intensive, and they don't solve the other negatives of car dependency. Cars are also dangerous, both the drivers, but especially those who aren't in cars. If cars weren't dangerous, we wouldn't need a Vision Zero plan. Car infrastructure takes up a lot of space and is very expensive. Simply look at satellite view on Google Maps to see how much of Bellevue is taken up by highways, roads, and parking lots. Between washed-out and city projects in recent years, hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent on roads in Bellevue each year. Bike Bellevue is asking for just 18 million. The lack of a complete network is the biggest factor preventing me from making more trips by bike. The bike infrastructure in Bellevue and the overall region is a patchwork. I would consider myself a confident rider, but it still takes significant research to go places I haven't biked to before, and a doable ride doesn't mean comfortable or safe. The network approach of Bike Bellevue is what makes it so impactful. It connects existing and future bike projects and provides access to so many current businesses and future developments, especially near light rail. We need more local access for bikes. Paths such as the 520 Trail and Spring Boulevard are great, but most destinations aren't served by the current network. A modeled analysis in Bellevue's 2044 comp plan shows that Bellevue's population could more than double by 2044, and much of this growth will be in areas served by Bike Bellevue. I asked the council, do we want to have twice as many cars on the road by then? We need alternatives. I'm sure the city is well aware of the facts I presented. I can tell because I'm referencing city documents. It's time to put these visions, goals, and plans into action. Bike Bellevue should be funded and implemented in full as soon as possible, and Bellevue should continue to expand the bike network throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Suzanne Ba.
Good evening. I've been a resident of Lake Heights for nearly 34 years. During that time, the Newport Hills Shopping Center has gone from a busy neighborhood retail and service destination to nothing short of a mess. More than 25 years of steady decline. Throughout the 25 years, I've spoken repeatedly with elected officials and city staff about the need for redevelopment until I'm sure they're sick of listening to me. In 2016 to 2018, two different developers presented projects both the city council and the community viewed favorably. Because however, or however, because the projects did not fit within the neighborhood business parameters, a comp plan amendment process was required and attempted. Several Newport area residents testified before the planning commission to the city council in favor of the comp plan amendment. However, after a small but loud minority voiced intense opposition to change in the shopping center, the owner lost heart and the developers withdrew from the process. That's how it was. That's nothing has changed. Recently, an MU low land designation was assigned to the center with no evidence that a financially viable project could be achieved within that land designation. For that reason, I propose that a mixed-use, low-medium land designation be approved now as part of the 2044 comprehensive plan, so that we go into the Newport subarea plan update process with a land designation in place, which gives potential developers a reasonable chance to design a financially viable project within existing designation. Demographics in Bellevue have changed. We need more multifamily residential units at different price points to accommodate younger and older residents, more outdoor common areas, and potentially incentives that support existing viable commercial tenants. As stated in the last Newport Hills subarea plan, local businesses, the community, and the city of Bellevue should creatively integrate these new and existing uses to enhance the area's economic vitality. Newport Hills Shopping Center has been in decline for years and gets markedly more dangerous every year. It is an eyesore beyond its usable and safe life. There is every chance that redevelopment may not happen at the mixed-use low land designation. It should be changed now to mixed-use low-medium land designation so that there's a reasonable opportunity to fix the 25-year-old mess that is the Newport Hills Shopping Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Heidi Dean. I believe is joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can. Charmaine, can you hear me?
I can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, council. I expected that Ms. Ba would show up this week, since Ms. Deutsch was there last week shilling for Heartland and the property owner Ray near Northwest. Let me remind council members who were on council last year that you have already voted as with the final EIS, you said that you were going to study the Newport Hills Shopping Center as mixed-use low-rise, along with other neighborhood centers. It made sense. I will also remind you again that that shopping center was under contract going into the pandemic and has a buyer that's still waiting. Ms. Ba knows nothing. She absolutely does not know what she's talking about. She never does when she shows up, ever.
Ms. Dean, can we talk about the issue and not the people who are coming here to public comment? You know, it takes a lot of courage to come before the council and speak, so let's just speak to the issue, please.
Well, it also takes a lot of balls to lie when you come to council. So I will address the fact that you have voted. If you were to go back and to change the designation on this property, you would be doing a spot rezone in the comp plan. Now, what I suspect is that Heartland has set up Ms. Ba and Ms. Deutsch to come in and lay out, as Ms. Ba just said, to lay the groundwork for verbiage, to get worked in for an upzone during the neighborhood plan update. And I will remind Deputy Mayor, who was on the planning commission back in June, Ms. Deutsch was one of the people who signed the letter as part of the Newport Hills Community Club board that opposed the massive upzone of the shopping center. She was behind Johnny Lou and I when we would come to council and also oppose the MU zoning upzone. So to see people come, let me remind you, too, that developers, property owners, and their real estate advisors, they always look for people within the neighborhoods to act as their mouthpieces and convince everybody else to do what they want. As a matter of fact, David Macduff and Mike Learman of Intropore wanted me to be their mouthpiece in 2016, and I wouldn't. So because the talking points that I have been presented last week and tonight are the exact talking points that Heartland, that you heard from Divya Kapoor back in July, after she had infiltrated our neighborhood walk and wanted to present information on our neighborhood. So I'm going to ask you, please, put a stop to this. This is about our neighborhood. There are potential. They don't know what they're talking about.
The next speaker on our list is Paul Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I live in Summamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. And what I'm sharing about Bellevue came through public record requests. Let's start with a reminder. You've heard me say that King County Survey of Trash Sent to the Landfill shows 2/3 of what is sent to the landfill can be either recycled or composted. So 2/3 of our trash is actually not trash. What I'm going to go over tonight, you've got the handout that I went over on the 22nd of January. So what it shows is that in Table 3, the third table down, our diversion rate is essentially flat versus 2022 and 2023. So Bellevue, with a strong environmental stewardship plan, it is a strong plan, did not make progress in the rate of recycling and composting in 2023. My recommendation for actions in 2024 are consistent with the city's environmental stewardship plan goal to reduce negative impacts from consumption and waste practices as you strive, noted in your plan, towards zero waste. In this meeting, let's walk through the second handout. So I recommend a more robust communication program in each newsletter sent to residents, providing the city's current diversion statistics and tips to improve their rates of recycling and composting. Let's tell our residents how we're doing in diversion. Let's make that transparent, and how they can improve individually with their choices. The city should initiate a program to provide each household and business a free indoor recycling container and free countertop kitchen scraps container. Typically, I've seen disposal companies help to fray these costs. The city could change pickup schedules to have garbage picked up every other week while retaining every week pickup for recycling and compost. I suggest the city pass ordinances to require all 1,753 remaining single-family homes utilize a food scrap and yard waste barrel. All businesses serving the public to make available a recycle container. That would include some of the 85 remaining businesses. All businesses serving the public should have available a food scraps container. Pass a city ordinance to require all remaining 309 multifamily locations that don't have a food scrap yard waste container available for their residents. Let's make recycling and composting simpler when a resident is working with a Bellevue business by requiring each business to work with a disposal company to ensure all public-facing disposal containers match colors used by residents. It's simpler. These matters have urgency, as each month Bellevue sends to the landfill another 3,600 tons. I believe the people in the city of Bellevue want to live sustainably. They need the tools and leadership of this council to help them increase their rates of recycling and composting. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Kimzie, who I believe is joining us virtually. Ms. Kimzie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you for having me this evening, City Council of Bellevue. My name's Jaclyn Kimzie, and I'm a cyclist. I love the Bike Bellevue Plan. I love to visit places like Whole Foods to go shopping. I like to go visit places like the Bellevue Brewing Company and Mox Boarding House, Trader Joe's at Bell Red, and I love the vegan eateries all along Bell Red Road. Unfortunately, biking up and down Bell Red Road is extremely dangerous, as you can probably tell from the four lanes of roads. That's why I was so excited when I saw the plan that Bike Bellevue had for Bell Red Road and Northrup Road and the rest of all the other bike infrastructure that's around Bellevue. And then I learned today that Bike Bellevue is being put on hold, and I don't understand. There's strong support for Bike Bellevue. We all put in our comments and, you know, talk to the transportation committee, and we can't figure out for the life of me why you would want to put this on hold, given how many lives are at risk right now? Is it just a few people who are pushing back on this one item? I don't understand. I would really love to see this back on the menu, back in our lives, and pushed forward as quickly as possible, because in order to get to that Vision Zero, we have to provide good infrastructure for cyclists. As I bike up Bell Red Road, there's that one middle school that I have to go by, Highland Middle School. Every time I go by there, cars are going in and out. There's no safe place for cyclists or pedestrians to go, and there are kids all over the place. I just know it's going to be somebody's life one of these days if we don't do something to help protect cyclists and pedestrians. That's why I'm begging you, please, please, push to have Bike Bellevue put into place and started immediately so that we can have the infrastructure that we need and, you know, reduce our dependency on cars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Saitlin.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Saitlin. I am a resident of Wilberton, and I am coming here to speak in support of Bike Bellevue. I live only about a mile from here, and I would love to be able to bike more often to downtown Bellevue. However, I often, more than often, tend to avoid doing so because it would involve biking across 405 in amongst traffic going on and off the 405. It is a death trap. Similarly, I go several times a week to visit my family in the Overlake neighborhood, which would theoretically be very easy to bike to. It's only a couple miles away. However, biking along Bell Red Road is very dangerous, and I avoid doing it. For those that say we don't need additional bicycle infrastructure in this city because we don't have very many cyclists on our road, part of why that is, a big reason why that is, is because our roads are death traps for cyclists. As Bellevue grows and becomes increasingly...
Mr. Saitlin, can you just back up a tiny bit? There you go.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
Not used to speaking into a microphone. As Bellevue grows, becomes more expensive, and faces the threats of climate change, the city must invest and make changes which allow for multimodal and non-car-dependent transportation methods, and which the Bike Bellevue Plan addresses, and I encourage the city to implement the Bike Bellevue proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, now my microphone wasn't working. That was our third speaker in support of Bike Bellevue, so we will not be able to take any further speakers. There was one additional that was signed up for Bike Bellevue. And our final speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihaiu, my name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Japanese. It's very good to feel right for Japanese, almost 100-year-old in Japanese-American enemy, kill 1,000 Americans. But it's very good. Can you answer me why you don't respect American people now? Because you cannot speak? No, don't interrupt me. It's very important. Where is you find this rule?
What you're speaking about has nothing to do with the Bellevue City Council.
You acting like a Nazi pig. You don't interrupt me. This is your rule. What has existed only for last couple years.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Only couple years, you this rule. So you respect Japanese country rule?
Mr. Zimmerman?
But you not respect because you're a Nazi pig.
He's not listening to me. So I'm going to ask that you stop talking for a moment.
Yes, you're a Nazi pig. This rule possibly disappear.
We're going to take a break. I'm going to ask you to square him out. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. Could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve our today consent calendar.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have four study session items tonight. The first one, I'm really looking forward to, Sound Transit, the Two Line Project Update. Anything you'd like to say, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. This will be an update from Sound Transit's Ron Lewis, who's here to provide counsel with an update on the Line 2 rail service. It's very exciting to know that we're getting close to light rail, service starting on the East Side. Ron is the Executive Director for Design Engineering and Construction Management at Sound Transit, and he's joined by John Lebo, East Link's Executive Project Director, and Ariel Taylor, Director of Government and Community Relations for East Corridor. And with that, I will hand it over to Ron Lewis.
Thank you very much, Diane. Madam Mayor, members of council, again, my name's Ron Lewis. I'm very pleased to be here with team members from Sound Transit to give you an update on the East Link Starter Line and anything else Sound Transit you may want to talk about. Mayor, as you know, there are going to be many opportunities in the near future for folks who are more eloquent than I to speak about the relationship with the city of Bellevue and what that's meant to Sound Transit, to get us to this point with our project. But I wanted... But I wanted to take this opportunity as part of the introduction to this presentation to express my appreciation, not only for you as the leader of the council and your council members as well, but the past, present, and future council and staff who've helped us get to this milestone. This journey began with a vision for a different future with regards to transportation in Bellevue and the region, and it's been a tough road, as you know, to get to this point. But what has been a driving force is a shared vision through the planning, through the design, through the permitting, through the construction, through the testing, and now the pre-revenue service phase that we're in now. And it has required a lot of partnership with the city of Bellevue. It hasn't always been easy. We haven't always agreed on everything. But that fundamental shared vision was a driving force that kept us going. It required trust, transparency, and tenacity. And that tenacity is because when you're delivering a project or a series of projects, as we are, of the magnitude and complexity of East Link and even the East Link Starter Line, it's a challenge, and there's problems that arise every day. I can tell you, when I started this project, I was a young man. I didn't have any gray in my beard, and I had a full head of hair. But we were able to work together to see problems, solve problems, and move the project forward. And for that, we're very grateful to our partners at the city of Bellevue. We're going to provide a short update today. Ariel is going to lead that. John and I are here to support. John is the Executive Project Director for the East Link project and can go very deep in all the details. So we're here at your pleasure to present and then answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, perfect. People can hear me. Hello, again, my name is Ariel, and I'm going to be giving a majority of the presentation today. And we'll start with just what we're planning to cover. We do want to spend most of this time answering any questions that you all have, but we do want to talk about some very exciting things happening in just a few short months here, which is the opening of the Two Line, which will connect, of course, Bellevue and Redmond to one another with eight new stations. But we'll be going into a little bit of project background and overview, some of the sequencing of those openings over the next few years, and of course, talking about how we're going to celebrate this great milestone this spring. All right, so what's coming? As you are fully aware, Sound Transit has had three ballot measures over the past several decades that are really building upon the shared vision that Ron was talking about in transforming the region. So we've had the original Sound Transit ballot measure in Sound Move in 1996, followed by ST 2 in 2008, which, spoiler alert, this is what the East Link project was funded under. So folks on the east side have been waiting quite a while for their light rail service. And then most recently, in 2016, we approved the latest expansion, which is the ST 3 projects, which include link extensions around the region, stride bus rapid transit lines, especially here on the east side, and of course, two new sounder stations with more capacity and parking. All right, this is the voter-approved system, which I just described in the previous slide. This is more of a visual map of what we're trying to build. This is all voter-approved. What you're going to see here is that number 2 on that map. A lot of that is here in Bellevue, and we're going to spend most of that time talking about that today. So East Link. Many of you are very familiar with the term East Link. I'm sure it's been sort of ingrained into many people's brains as the light rail that is coming to Bellevue and Redmond. You may have heard it referred to as 14 miles, 10 stations, and it will fully open in 2025. That's the image you see at the top of your screen. At the bottom of your screen, you're going to see a different image, and that is just the highlighted portions of the East Link line between South Bellevue and Redmond Technology Station. That is eight stations, seven miles. And the Board of Directors, our Sound Transit Board of Directors, approved the opening of these initial eight stations last year as part of the 2024 service plan, and that will actually set to open in spring of this year. Now, why are we talking about eight stations this year and not the full 10? A few years ago, we found some construction errors on the I-90 floating bridge portion of the East Link project. So instead of waiting for the entirety of the I-90 section to be completed, the Board of Directors was like, you know what? We have eight stations that are ready to go in Bellevue and Redmond that could connect Bellevue and Redmond to one another. Why don't we go ahead and open those while we still work to complete the sections on the I-90 bridge? So this kind of goes into some of that sequencing. At first, we're going to open the eight stations here on the east side called the East Link Starter Line. You may have heard that term in the past. That will be opening this spring. We will also be opening later this year the Linwood Link Extension, followed by Downtown Redmond Link Extension and the East Link Extension across the I-90 Bridge in 2025, and then the Federal Way Link Extension in 2026. So as you can see, we are creating quite a big workload for ourselves here in opening new light rail lines across the region over the next several years. So Two Line. This is where things get fun. So you may have heard East Link, East Link, East Link, East Link is coming. East Link's being delivered. However, when we open the East Link line, we are actually going to be referring to it as the Two Line. This is really for our passenger experience so that folks know that when they get on the number 2, they can follow that blue line on the map. The Two Line will eventually connect all the way up to Linwood, which is why you see that line the way it is today. That is, of course, when the I-90 floating bridge portion is complete. This is what the 2024 extension will look like. So the One Line will extend all the way to Linwood. The One Line is currently being serviced in Seattle. That's the line that goes to the airport. And the Two Line will be the service on the east side. The Two Line, again, will service all the way up to Linwood when the I-90 floating bridge is complete. So what are the benefits of opening up this initial segment? It introduces light rail to the east side. It activates six and a half miles of the East Link segment with eight stations, and it's a chance to connect the major job centers and the region to one another. So you have, you know, people who live in Bellevue who might work at the Microsoft campus. You have people in Kirkland who might want to take the bus down to Bellevue and travel within Bellevue to many of the great restaurants, activities, job centers. It really is not just a Bellevue and Redmond segment. It is actually an east side segment. Link trains will arrive about every 10 minutes, and they will be operating between 5:30 a.m. and 9:30 p.m., seven days a week. The total trip from South Bellevue Station to the Redmond Technology Station will be about 17 minutes. We will have two car trains, and all stations, of course, are ADA accessible. Now for the fun part. We are going to be celebrating the opening of this light rail line this spring. Now, I do not have a date for you. I know that that's probably the first question everyone is going to ask. In fact, I probably get that question five, six, seven, eight, nine times a day, but some of them from your lovely staff over here. I do not have the date for you. I wish I did. But we will have the date for you very soon. And as soon as we have it, believe me, this group will be one of the first notified. This is just an example of some of the most recent light rail openings that we've had at Sound Transit. Most recently, the Tacoma Link Extension opened. Of course, here's a ribbon-cutting celebration with a couple of our board members and local elected officials. In fact, Senator Maria Cantwell is also in this photo. We expect a similar opening celebration here in downtown Bellevue for the ribbon-cutting location. Here are some more images of what you can expect on opening weekend. We are expecting to activate every single one of the eight stations with some sort of community-led activity. Each of those stations is not only being supported by Sound Transit and activities that we would, of course, do on opening day, but we are also partnering with places like the Bellevue Downtown Association, the Pacific Science Center, the Bell Red Arts District. East Trail Partners out in Redmond were partnering with Move Redmond and Microsoft and One Redmond to deliver very much community-led celebrations at each of these stations. Just going off script a little bit, I'm very excited about this opening day because I think it's going to be very fun. So please, when the date is announced, please come on down. That goes for anybody who's also listening to this presentation. All right, so this is my last slide before we get into questions. But really, we are working with the community to make this celebration about them. This light rail line is for the east side community and, of course, for the region. And we want to make sure we are centering community when we do open this system. I mentioned some of the organizations that we are collaborating with for opening day celebrations. We will, of course, if you would like, submit a list of all of those organizations in which we are happy to partner with. And of course, I also said that the ribbon-cutting location for this line will be happening here in downtown Bellevue, actually just across the plaza here from City Hall, which is very exciting. And it wouldn't be my presentation without saying, yes, this is happening this spring, but I do not have a date for you yet. All right, and with that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great presentation. Thank you. We are very excited. Any comments or questions? We'll start with Councilmember Zahn and work her way down.
Yes, thank you. You know, I too am excited, and Ron, I think we're both graying together, so. This is really an exciting time, and we will not ask you what the date is because, you know, we know that you'll tell us when you're ready. I did have a couple of questions, though, with the Starter Line. I know that you've been working really hard with Metro Connects so that once we have the full piece, right, that whole metro system and routes are going to be adjusted. So during this interim period, are we anticipating some modest changes to link the South Bellevue Park and Ride to Seattle? I'm just trying to understand how that might work. And then I noticed that it's 5:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. So people that are showing up to go to shows or eating late, how do they get back? So was 9:30 a time that was based on outreach to the community and just figuring out what that looks like? Then my last question is, 2025 is a really long year. So any sense for whether it's Q1, 2, 3, or 4 for the full line opening?
Well, I'll go ahead and have the 2025 question punted to my teammates that are here, but I'm happy to talk about some of the partnerships we're having with the other transit agencies in the region, especially King County Metro, and actually our own ST Express service. So we are planning to have the 550 continue to run so that people will have an option to cross the lake. 550 is not going away with the opening of this initial segment of the East Link line or the Two Line. I need to get myself more familiar with the Two Line. The 550 will continue to run. We are also partnering with King County Metro to provide a lot of extra service, especially the morning of the ribbon-cutting celebration. When we do open this line, we are hoping to partner with them to get people to downtown. So that's an ongoing conversation we're having. The east side bus network, I don't believe, is planning to change with this initial segment of the Two Line. But as we look to open the full East Link line, we are working to update that bus network in a project called Metro-- no, what is it? East Link Connections. There we go. That's the terminology of the night. But yes, that is something we are working on, and we are closely collaborating with King County Metro.
So you asked about completion of the I-90 segment, and we're making very good progress. As you drive across the bridge, you may see the construction crews working out there. We're about two-thirds of the way done with our track, which is the area that we're reconstructing. And then that will be followed by our systems contract to put in the power and signal systems. We are trending to the latter part of 2025 at this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. Thanks for the update. Really appreciate it. Obviously, we were a bit thrilled, to be honest, when we heard about the new interim CEO being a former city of Bellevue employee, so, who I believe was our director of transportation here for a number of years. So that's fantastic. Councilmember Zahn asked most of my questions, but I did have one quick one for you, and that is really just around the work that's currently being done to finalize the stations, especially the South Bellevue Station. Just kind of curious in terms of what project risks might remain for the Starter Line or the Two Line now. I'm just getting used to East Link a little bit. Now it's Two, anyways. But so how is Sound Transit managing this completion of the remaining work that's still ahead? And will any work remain even after the passenger service starts to begin?
So you've seen some of the additional work that we've been doing at South Bellevue Station. So when we reached near the end of our construction, we noticed some issues with our platform tile. We saw some cracking of the tiles. We also saw buckling of the tile, where the tile actually rose up. We hired a contractor to come in and do some fixes this summer. And in the course of doing those repair work, we discovered additional issues. And to always make sure that we provide our platforms and our stations that are safe to the public, we looked at these more in-depth, and that led us to actually replace the entire tile assembly for the platform at the South Bellevue Station. It also did cause us to go and look at our other stations because they have a similar type of construction. And we found some issues at each of our stations, which we are currently resolving now, more extensively at the Spring District Station. So we are replacing most of the tile at the Spring District Station, as well as the other stations. We are repairing tile and resetting them. Our goal is always to make sure that our stations and our trains are running safely for the public. We are taking every step to make sure that our platforms are safe and our cars are safe. We're very confident that when we open to the public this spring, that we will have repaired the issues and that our stations will be safe. It takes a lot of work, and it's very disappointing that we're having to redo this, but we want to make sure that we're safe for the public when we open.
Terrific. And since you mentioned safe, I'm going to ask another question because this council funded a transit team for Bellevue Police Department. I'm just curious, any coordination has begun with them or previously had already been beginning with the Starter Line so close to opening here? Would be curious how those conversations have gone.
So I've not been involved directly with those conversations, but our safety and security team works very closely with municipalities here in Bellevue, as well as Redmond and King County. So they're in close contact and developing the plans and procedures necessary with the staffing to make sure that we have adequate security at each one of our stations and that we have appropriate response times if there are an incident. We do take, as we mentioned, safety very seriously, so we do have our own securities persons that will be at the stations. You may even know now that we do have almost full-time security at our stations to protect our assets even before we open to the public.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
You'd also asked if there was any other remaining work. There's signal heads that we're going to-- new signal heads that will be installed after we open in the Bell Red area. There's such a long lead item that we wanted to provide signal heads out there that resolve that might have any conflicts for drivers who are approaching an intersection near our station. So we're buying special traffic signal heads.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for sharing great news. We are all excited. I have two questions that are kind of related, and they are both just for the interest of learning. In the interest of learning from this experience, could you share any insight into the factors that went to these constructions? Issues that caused the delays? Like, was it just the engineers and the construction folks didn't talk to each other? What was some of those issues for lesson learns? And follow-up-- didn't talk to each other? What was some of those issues for lesson learns? And follow-up to these questions, now all of this stuff happened, to just also, do you have any information that how you are managing these additional costs that has been created due to these construction issues?
So to answer the first question, one of the things that's occurring, and it's not unique to this region, is that there's a lot of construction going on. So there is a heavy demand on our contractors and our engineers and designers, as well as the people who support construction. There's not as much talent as we would all like to have on the engineering and construction side. So many of the issues that we're dealing with, I think, come from a lack of experience. And so what we see, for example, at the South Bellevue Station, we believe to be contractor-related. So we are treating these issues as either warranty issues or we're seeking to eventually recover our costs to make these repairs. But as an industry, it's a real challenge. We've lost a lot of skilled people over the years for retirements. COVID has had a great impact on that as well. So we are trying our best to find those individuals that can bring the experience needed to make sure that we're doing the construction correctly. So on the reconstruction that we have going on now, we've hired in experts from around the country to help us to make sure that when we rebuild it, it's built correctly. And we've taken those lessons with regard to our other work that we're doing around the sound to make sure that we have the appropriate persons who have the skill and experience to make sure that we are doing it correctly. Wherever we find that these costs may be attributable to someone else, we will be seeking compensation for that.
I'll just say that since I've been on the council in 2014, it's been full speed ahead with light rail, and I really want to commend the leadership that we had ahead of me, which was Mayor, former Mayor Balducci, former Mayor Stokes, and former Mayor John Chalmanac really helped lead the charge for getting us to where we are today. So I'm really excited. My only comment is that I hope, you know, just like you were saying, this is a regional asset, and even just, even because it's in Bellevue, people from Kirkland and surrounding cities will benefit. I hope we can make that clear to the neighborhoods. Just because you don't live close to the stations doesn't mean you won't benefit. And so I want to make sure that we really have buy-in from all our community, and when they come in for the celebration, that it, they feel like it's part of their asset for them as well. Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Well, thanks for coming to give us a report. And Ron, how are you? I'm glad to see you. We started the project when I was the mayor. We negotiated with Sound Transit about the Bellevue alignment, and I appointed three council members to resume Bellevue to negotiate with Sound Transit with Joni Earl, and two of them are gone, Kevin Wallace and Jennifer Robertson. And we're very glad Jon Stokes is still with us. And so you're losing a lot of hair, a lot of gray. I'm still having my hair, so we're still surviving. So good to see you. Anyway, I think we, as Ron said, it's a shared vision. We may not agree on a lot of things, but it's through disagreement, through dialogues, through conversation, we get a good deal. We get a good project, you know? So we have lots of discussion, conversation. As a result, I think the East Link has turned out to be the best Sound Transit light rail in the whole region. We're safe. We're well-done. The neighbors like it. Everything works good. And unfortunately, there's some technical problems, you know, and as you mentioned, various things happen. It's a big, big deal. You know, we talk about Boston Dig. This one's bigger than Boston Dig. You know, we're spending, committing a lot of money over the next 10 years, $100 billion. So we have to make sure that the money, it goes a long way and get the job done. So I really appreciate what Deputy Mayor was asking you, you know, what are the challenges that we can resolve with the money we have, and if we don't, what else can we get? So we're looking forward. Working in the spirit of collaboration and shared vision, we need to get the best we can get. And to begin with, we got to get the lines going so that we can make sure that it serves the community. We've been waiting for a long time. So I have three questions. When we have the number 2 line going, what would happen to the Rapid Ride? Is it going to still be running, or is it going to be?
Are you referring to Rapid Ride B in Bellevue? Yes, I believe the plan is for King County Metro to continue that service, but I would have to double-check, but that is what I believe.
Okay, okay. And you also mentioned the I-90 across the lake. You brought it up, and that's a tough issue because when we first look at it, you know, that has never been done. Then the train goes across a floating bridge. When things are moving, you know, with the rail, it's got to go work with it, so a lot of stress on it. And so I know that Sound Transit has been working for a long time, you know, trying to figure out that's a problem. I hope we'll have a solution, and I hope that we don't have an anticipated problem where it gets going. So I hope that we'll have, see the line coming across, as you predicted, hopefully by, you know, end of 2024 or by 2025, or maybe even later. But that's fine. It sounds coming because it is an important link for us, linked to the east side, to the west side, to Seattle. So we anxious to look forward, and thanks for your continued work at it. And we're very glad that, you know, the collaboration of the federal government, of the regional government, we're all working together with a shared vision. So final question is, you mentioned about policing, about security. I know that, you know, when you have a new system, it's always an anticipated, maybe some security concerns. And so the question was asked, who is going to provide the security? If the Sound Transit is going to provide it, and the security of the asset, well, how about the security, you know, around the station? And I think that's another concern. And if the Bellevue Police has to be involved, you know, who will be helping Bellevue Police with funding to make sure that we have adequate security and, you know, policing policies and devices? Can you answer that?
Sure, I can.
Yeah, thanks, Ron.
Thank you for the comments and questions.
Thanks.
Councilmember Lee.
Let me start by saying our partnership with City of Bellevue and in particular, emergency responders, both police and fire, goes back a long ways. Those agreements that you made reference to provided the framework for that relationship, and it's manifested itself through all stages of project delivery. I'll give you some examples. We have to buy property to build these projects, and we have to demolish buildings to do that. Well, we coordinated with the fire department, and they used some of those structures for training exercises before we demolished them. It was a good use of that space before we could demolish it, and it helped the fire department get trained. Further on in the project, as facilities start to get built, like the downtown Bellevue Tunnel, for example, and other locations along the alignment, we have scheduled and coordinated emergency response drills with both police and fire, where they join us in participating in drills of the types of things that might happen in a system that we all need to be prepared for. So the relationship exists. South Bellevue, South Bellevue Parking Garage opened, what, a year and a half ago? Something like that?
In 2021.
In 2021, and we coordinated very closely with the police department there. So our security forces are talking to one another, not just for the big emergencies that they coordinate on at a regional level, but the day-to-day responses as well. I will say, to be honest, that we have experience opening these lines. We think we're going to, we think we know what's going to happen. We're always surprised a little bit. Human nature, human behavior is always a little bit different than we predict. So we're not going away after opening day. We're going to be right here monitoring how people are accessing the stations by all modes, by walking, by bicycling, by bus, by car. How are they parking? And we're going to be monitoring those things to work with you and work out any bugs that may present themselves.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
These have been good questions so far, and really appreciate your responding to this. And this is so exciting. I want to, and I appreciate the mayor mentioning this. I was appointed to be on the team, and this is going back to the collaborative effort, which has always been here, working with Bellevue and Sound Transit. It's just amazing. When I came on in 2012, the plan had been put in place, and we were going to then work together with the Sound Transit on doing at the top levels and getting everything so it goes well, which hadn't been done before. So the mayor at the time, Conrad Lee, appointed me and Councilmember Wallace and Councilmember Robertson to the team to work with Joni Earl and you and others, this was the first of 2012, to put all this thing together. And it's always been a collaborative effort then and now, even through all these changes and all the things going. Nothing ever happens without going off in directions like this. But I think we just have a lot to appreciate and benefit from the way we work together. And I think it was very unique at the time. And I'd gone through a lot of problems the first time around on this, and I think that's been a reason why we're having such a great, we'll have a great, great system going forward. And then the thing that is also very important is the continuation going on. I think right now, we've gotten this set up in a way that is going to be amazing and work together. And again, all three of you and other staff working with our staff has been just a consistent piece of action, and I think that's unique. You find a lot of times where big cities and smaller cities get, and organizations get kind of mixed up and everything else, and even though it hasn't gone perfect, and we can never expect that, but it's always been a very successful and, I think, a very good relationship, and we will certainly keep that up and appreciate it very much. And it's amazing when I think back to January 2012, and here we are, and it's going to be done. And it's one of the reasons I wanted to be on council again, because I want to be here and take that train over to Seattle. So, but really, it's just been great and appreciate it very much, and we'll continue to work with you. And I think you have something else to talk about.
Mayor, thank you for being here. Appreciate the presentation. Certainly appreciate all the work that my colleagues have done in conjunction with Sound Transit and the community members who've really helped shape this plan. And here we are, close to having something that's getting started. So it really is exciting and look forward to the ribbon-cutting coming up. I had some of the similar questions that have already been answered, but I think the security questions, I think that is kind of a big one, and that one where maybe I need a little more clarity, and that might come from our city staff, maybe a little bit better. So I appreciate you addressing them to the degree that you can. Just kind of curious about ridership. How many folks do we think are going to be there? Do we have an idea of what they're, of who those folks are? Are they going to shop or work? And also a question, too, about what does it cost? What's it cost to get from South Bellevue to Redmond, if that's all you did?
That's a great question, and I have my employer-paid pass that I always just tap. I believe our flat or our standard fare right now is $3.25. Does that sound right, Phyllis? Yes, we all have employer-paid passes where we just tap on. Yes, I believe it's $3.25 to tap on. That is time-based. So when you, when your time expires, you will have to tap back on. We are encouraging folks to tap on and tap off at every location that you get on and off. That's very important to our system and just being able to track folks like you're suggesting. Are they going to work? Are they going to school? They going shopping? I am not on the right slide. Here we go. We are expecting, so the full East Link Line to 43,000 to 52,000 daily riders. Of course, that's going to be lower with the East Link Starter Line, the 2 Line. I don't think we have an actual estimation that I can give you right now. That's something I can go back and look at, but we do know that that will be a lower amount. But when we cross the bridge, we are expecting quite a few more riders.
Great. And just wanted to ask, too, about noise and vibration complaints. We've heard a little bit about that. Anything to update or since you've been out testing, what are you hearing?
Oh, my gosh, what a great question. So at my time at Sound Transit, I've worked on a lot of different projects, and I know that one of the most sincere concerns people have is noise and vibration, not only during construction, but of course, when the system is up and running. I'm actually very pleased to say that we have only had two noted complaints to the Sound Transit Service, like the Sound Transit Service Department. So we've only tracked two complaints. Both of those complaints were resolved. One of them in particular was someone noting some squeaky rails that we had right as we started testing, and we were able to go out, lubricate those rails, and it seems like that satisfied the complaint.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. Looking forward to this celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we'll take a break here till 20 after, and we don't need that much of the time. How about quarter after? Just take a quick little break, come back. Human Services, one is information-only, one, the other one's a direction, and I'll let the city manager go ahead and describe the two for us.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two presentations. We'll start with the Human Services Needs Assessment. That's conducted every two years to obtain a comprehensive picture of needs and issues in Bellevue. And then I'll describe the second one after this one is completed. As you see on the agenda, this is for information-only. And joining from the Parks and Community Services Department, we have Michael Shiasaki and Assistant Director, Michael is the director, and Tony Asparza is the Assistant Director for Parks and Community Services, and they are joined by a guest, Dr. Beers. And I'll let them introduce her. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Shiasaki.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and members of the city council. Tony Asparza and I are joined this evening by Dr. Megan Beers. She's a senior consultant from Health Management Associates, the consulting firm that the city contracted with for data collection and analysis for the Human Services Needs Update. So this evening, we have two presentations, and first, we'll start with the findings of the 2023, excuse me, the 2023, 24 Human Services Needs Update. And this report will contain significant data regarding the needs in our community, and this portion is for your information-only. This data directly contributed to the formation of the strategic plan that will follow in Part 2 of this presentation. And so after this first portion, the Needs Update, we will pause for questions, questions that seek clarity on the data, keeping in mind that in Part 2, we'll include a presentation on the strategic plan, which will provide recommendations on strategy in response to that data. So the second presentation tonight will be the Human Services Strategic Plan, and we will be seeking direction from the council to return with a resolution on a future consent calendar to adopt the strategic plan. The strategic plan establishes objectives and actions and helps prioritize the city, how the city addresses human services needs, and allows us to better understand your values. It's not a budget request, but it will be used to inform a future budget request. I will now hand off the presentation to Tony Asparza to introduce Part 1, the 2023, 24 Human Services Needs Update.
Thank you, Director Shiasaki, and good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present the critical findings of the 23, 24 Human Services Needs Update this evening. As Director Shiasaki indicated, this is an information-only presentation. The city has a longstanding history of generating a very vital report on the human services needs of the community dating clearback to 1989. This report is used within the city to inform our human services funding. It's also used by other city staff to generate an understanding of the community and inform the work that might impact the community. It's used by others outside of the city, including human services agencies themselves, other public funders, some faith groups, for example. This year, the city contracted with Health Management This year, the city contracted with Health Management Associates, a health and human services specialty firm, to conduct outreach and data analysis. And in the formulation of these two reports, we'll present to you this evening. Tonight, as Director Shiasaki mentioned, we have Dr. Megan Beers. And Dr. Beers is going to provide you an overview of the outreach and data collection that occurred for these reports.
Thank you, Tony. And thank you for having me this evening. Very nice to see you. So as you can see on the slide, this needs update included a variety of data collection methods, both qualitative methods and quantitative methods. We conducted two surveys as part of the needs update, a survey of community members, as well as a survey of human services providers. We conducted interviews, key informant interviews with subject matter experts, as well as attended network coalition meetings. Additionally, the needs update included a review of quantitative data that is available on city needs related to a variety of aspects of human services, as well as a review of panel presentations, a variety of panel presentations over the last year to 18 months that were given to the Human Services Commission. Important to note that the data collection plan, when we designed it at the outset, was really intended to center the voices of consumers of human services in Bellevue, and particularly those with intersectional identities, including some of those that you see listed here. Community, when we look at the demographics of those who responded, for those who, those whose perspectives we heard in the needs update, we can see that we achieved this goal with more than half of survey respondents reporting having participated in at least one human service in Bellevue in the previous year, excuse me, in the previous two years. Additionally, when we look at the income of survey respondents, along with human services utilization, we conclude, can conclude that the survey effectively reached low and moderate income residents of Bellevue. As you can see reflected here, we had more than 1,000 community members and more than 65 human service agencies participate and provide their perspective as part of the Human Services Needs Update. And the expertise and experience that they offered in their time and engagement is really the foundation on which all the rest of what you're going to hear about the needs update is built. I also wanted to add that, that really the engagement, the community engagement that was conducted as part of the needs update would not have been possible without the trust and relationships that the Bellevue Human Service Team has built, both with providers and with community members. And so the results that you see here really stands on the shoulders of the good work that is happening day to day in the Human Services Team in Bellevue. So here you will see here, six key themes that emerged from the community engagement data, as well as the quantitative data that we discussed. And I'm going to take a moment to just walk through these themes. And then I'll give, pass it back to Tony, who will speak more to specific service area considerations. First, you'll see the note about changing demographics in Bellevue and meeting needs in culturally specific ways. As, as I'm sure all, all folks in the room are aware, Bellevue has undergone and continues to undergo significant demographic shifts, reflecting ethnic, racial, socioeconomic, gender, and sexual diversity. Community member and provider feedback throughout the needs update really highlighted the ways that the human services infrastructure has struggled to keep pace with the, with the pace of the changing demographics in Bellevue. And this was a key theme throughout. Additionally, our data pointed to the disproportionate impact by race and language. And what we mean here is that the needs update data highlighted the different experiences of residents based on their race and language, which impacts well-being in the city of Bellevue, and also the extent to which residents are able to access needed human services within the city. Another key theme that emerged from the data focused on the knowledge of available resources. So specifically, information that we gathered through the, across community engagement methods really highlighted the lack of knowledge of available resources and the need for continuing and expanded efforts to help residents understand and connect to resources. Importantly here, we heard about a lot of great efforts that the city has already undertaken to increase knowledge of available resources and, and really highlighted the work that is continued, we need to continue to do to increase the knowledge that residents have about getting the resources that they need. Next, we see that the theme listed here as communication, collaboration, and convening. So this is a theme that we, that was echoed both by providers, human services providers, as well as residents within Bellevue, with residents in particular emphasizing their desire to partner with the city, and specifically their desire to partner in the co-design of human services to meet the needs of the communities of which they are a part. The residents, as well as provider, really, really emphasize the importance of ensuring that community members have a key voice, and particularly, community members with lived experience accessing human services system have a, have a voice, not only in updates such as this, and there was a strong value expressed in being able to engage in this needs update, but also an ongoing voice, kind of throughout the life of human services in Bellevue, to be able to be involved, provide feedback, and help to iterate with city partners on how services are designed and delivered. Next, we really heard from our providers, the growing challenges for human services providers. This is really consistent, I think, with, with what we know is going on, both regionally as well as nationally, in terms of challenges that are facing the sector, particularly coming out of the COVID pandemic. Providers noted struggling to meet the, the growing human services needs that they're facing with Bellevue residents, given challenges that they're facing with respect to funding, staffing, other key infrastructure needs. I will say that there was a particular note of recognizing that the funding landscape is changing at the end of, at the, as, as one-time funding comes to an end and sort of a wondering, have, how, how do we continue to meet escalated needs in the face of that changing, changing funding environment? Next, we can see the, the theme around cost of living, availability of housing, and availability, availability of services. This was noted as a challenge across the data collection methods, with both community members, as well as human services providers, identifying service gaps across the human services continuum. We will note that affordable housing and cost of living were cited as the most common concerns across community focus groups. But we heard about gaps and concerns in a variety of aspects of, of human service. And I'll turn to Tony now to speak more to some of those gaps.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Data gathered from all sources that Dr. Beers described indicated that there are critical needs in several areas. But overall, the data demonstrated a shortage of available services, with only 49% of survey respondents who needed human services able to access them. And further, the data demonstrated a particular shortage in culturally and linguistically specific services, with only 43% of those that needed services being able to access them in a way that supported their culture or language needs. And now we'll move into some particular critical areas that were highlighted through the outreach and engagement. The first is housing and homelessness. As we all know, Bellevue, along with the region, is grappling with housing insecurity. The percentage of Bellevue residents that are severely cost burdened by rent has risen significantly from 15.4% in 2019 to 18.2% in 2022. And that represents 27,960 residents. Severely cost burdened is defined as households paying more than 50% of their income for housing. And thus, those households may have trouble affording other necessities, such as food, clothing, childcare, and medical care. In addition, the number of individuals experiencing homelessness increase, is increasing. The 2022 Point in Time Count, which is conducted by the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, or KCRHA, showed an increase in the number of people experiencing homelessness in King County on a given night, from 11,751 in 2020 to 13,368 in 2022. This is a one-night count of unhoused individuals that can be identified on that evening. And while this is a national standard, this methodology is widely understood to be an undercount. Thus, we look to other data points to help us understand the experience of homelessness in our region. The King County Department of Community and Human Services found that 40,871 individuals experienced homelessness in King County during all of 2020. And it's really important to note that the data shows significant disparities in who experiences homelessness. Individuals identifying as American Indian, Alaska Native, or Indigenous, Black, African American, or African, Hispanic and Latino, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, as well as individuals identifying as more than one race, were overrepresented in King County's population experiencing homelessness. Similarly, individuals living with disabilities and those experiencing behavioral health challenges are also more likely to experience homelessness. And relative to Bellevue, our providers and outreach staff have also seen an increase in the number of our residents experiencing homelessness, and have seen similar disparities in Bellevue residents in who experiences homelessness and who does not. We're also seeing in data from the Bellevue School District that there's an increase in students experiencing homelessness. Student homelessness is defined by the Federal McKinney-Vento Assistance Act, which authorizes the Federal Education for Homelessness Children and Youth Program. This is the primary piece of federal legislation related to the education of children and youth experiencing homelessness. And it defines homelessness for children and youth as those who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. It does not define those terms further, but when applied, this can encompass experiences of homelessness, such as staying in a shelter, living in a car, and living outside. It can also include those students who are forced to stay temporarily with another household, a practice that's sometimes referred to as couch surfing or doubled up. And per the National Center for Homelessness Education, which is a part of the U.S. Department of Education, families who share adequate housing on a long-term basis due to preference or convenience would not be covered by this act. Each of these experiences of homelessness are included for students because of the impacts they have on education, development, and overall well-being. Students in each of these situations experience uncertainty and trauma. And later in this presentation, you'll see the direct impacts to education with less than 60% of students that experience homelessness in our school district graduating. And you can see on the screen that during 22 to 23 school year, there were 663 students in our district that were identified as homeless. When we asked further to the district's Office of Homelessness Services, they indicated that the increase is largely attributable to housing costs, including increasing rent and high moving costs. They pointed to other reasons for families experiencing homelessness as eviction, natural disasters, unexpected illness, unemployment, fleeing violence, systemic challenges experienced by those with disabilities, and rising costs which disproportionately impact those living in poverty. We'll move on to another area of critical need highlighted in the report, which is food security. The percentage of the Bellevue School District students that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch, which is an indicator of need, demonstrates that there is a growing sense of food insecurity amongst our students and families, with the rate increasing from 15.5% in 2019 to almost 20% in 2023. And the district would like to let us know that this is likely an undercount of those who actually qualify. Beyond the district, there have been recent changes in eligibility and benefits for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which is also known as SNAP. And this has resulted in decreasing benefits for residents. But in the meantime, there are more residents trying to access the benefits after a period of decline prior to the COVID pandemic. And as you can see, Black, Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian, and Hispanic or Latino residents receive SNAP benefits at a higher rate than our overall population, which indicates that disproportionately, they experience significant food needs. Another area of critical need is health and well-being. Significant behavioral health needs have increased following the pandemic, and they remain high. While needs are rising across demographic groups, there is variability in who can access appropriate behavioral health services. And there's significant variability by race and ethnicity. For example, the 21-22 King County Community Health Needs Assessment indicated that non-Hispanic white residents were able to access needed social and emotional support at a rate significantly higher than individuals in other racial and ethnic groups. And this relates to a theme that we heard about here in Bellevue, which was previously noted by Dr. Beers, on the lack of culturally and linguistically specific services for our residents. Data for the Washington and, for the state of Washington and King County demonstrate significant needs, particularly among youth in this area, with nearly 20% of sixth graders reporting having seriously contemplated suicide. The Washington Department of Health has highlighted the increased risk of mental health challenges for certain demographics of youth, including those who are sexually and gender diverse, and individuals with disabilities. This state and county data provides insights into the challenges that youth in Bellevue may be experiencing. And in our panel presentations to the Human Services Commission on youth behavioral health, we heard that similar needs existed for our youth here in Bellevue. An expansion, and another area of health and well-being, both fatal and non-fatal drug overdoses have shown a significant upward trend in recent years, largely driven by the arrival of fentanyl. Fentanyl deaths are at an all-time high. Over 1,050 of the county's approximately 1,300 fatal overdoses in 2023 involved fentanyl, surpassing the previous number by an astounding 47%. In recent years, Bellevue has also seen an upward trend in overdoses. In both focus groups and the community survey, respondents identified access to behavioral health support as a very significant need. And it was particularly pronounced with substance use disorder services, where only 27% of respondents who sought this service reporting that they were able to access it within their community. Another area of critical need highlighted is violence prevention and survivor support and advocacy. We heard a few relevant examples from our providers that demonstrate the type of demand that they are experiencing. Lifewire, who provides a confidential emergency and transitional shelter for survivors of domestic violence, supported clients in 2022 through 4,974 bed nights for Bellevue residents, and 8,172 bed nights for their clients in the whole. In 2022, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, or CASARC, provided 852 hours of comprehensive crisis and advocacy services in English and Spanish for our residents who have experienced sexual assault and abuse. And a final example from the Harborview Abuse and Trauma Center, who provided 215 hours of counseling services to Bellevue residents who experienced trauma. And as we noted earlier, escaping violence is one of the contributors to families experiencing homelessness in the Bellevue School District. Another area of critical need is in employment and education. While unemployment in Bellevue is relatively low overall and to be celebrated, rates of unemployment for Black and Indigenous residents is notably higher than for others. Community members highlighted childcare as a challenge which impacts their access to employment. Of those who reported having accessed affordable childcare, only 38% reported that they were able to find it within their community. Importantly, affordability of childcare, which is measured by the percentage of a household's income that's spent on childcare, varies significantly by household characteristics, such as race and ethnicity, or single versus married. One example of those disparities, 12% of income in a non-Hispanic white married family in King County goes to pay for childcare, while 29% of income in non-Hispanic Black married families goes to pay for childcare. Multiracial, single households in Washington pay the highest percentage of their income at 52% of any group towards childcare. An additional need that was expressed from the community was transportation as a significant concern. This came up in focus groups and interview conversations with both community members and providers noting this as an access to employment. Of the survey respondents who needed access to transportation support, only about half reported being able to find this service in the community. Further, on education and employment, the Bellevue School District is also renowned for its excellence in education. But there are stark disparities in the educational outcomes for some of our most marginalized students. For example, as we mentioned earlier, students who are experiencing homelessness. Also, those who are English language learners, students of some races and ethnicities, and those with disabilities, as you can see on the screen, graduate at significantly lower rate than their peers overall in the district. Our community also reported experiences of hate, discrimination, and bias. Data collection demonstrated that support to address discrimination or racism is a significant service gap for our already marginalized residents. Only 25% of survey respondents who accessed this support reported that they were able to access the service in their community. And only 17% reported receiving the support in a language that met their needs. As a means to help address these challenges, residents emphasized the need for representation at decision-making tables to reduce the prevalence of bias and misunderstanding of community needs. Critical gaps for older adults were also noted in the data collection. 14.2% of Bellevue residents are 65 years or older. And Bellevue's older adult population generally reflects the diversity that we find in the wider Bellevue population. But older adults noted difficulty in accessing services, even if they do exist. Both transportation and technology were noted as barriers to accessing service and other aspects of their community. Residents noted the Residents noted the need for in-person and paper access to services, which is a reminder that while technology increases access for some, it can create barriers for others. Only 42% of older adult survey respondents felt that they could find the services that they needed in the community, and our older adult residents noted in particular the need for increased affordable housing specific to their needs. And our last service area we'll cover this evening is services for individuals with disabilities. An estimated 7.3% of Bellevue residents are living with a disability. Survey respondents noted difficulty in accessing services in the community for those with a disability. Of the survey respondents who reported accessing services such as this, only 38% were able to find the resource in the community, and only 32% felt they were able to receive the services in a reasonable amount of time. Particular barriers were noted for those with disabilities who do not speak English as a first language, and for those seeking disability services for children and youth, with community members requesting specific outreach and programming for the disability community. And with that, I will turn it back over to Director Shiasaki.
Thank you, Tony. So in summary, the needs update presents a picture of human services infrastructure that shows significant need, both strengths and challenges, and significant opportunities. So in the second presentation this evening on the Human Services Strategic Plan, we'll report on how this data will inform our work moving forward. So Mayor Robinson, I will turn this back over to you for any questions or discussions seeking clarity on the data we just presented. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to the next part, are there any comments or questions on the data that was just presented to us? Okay, yes, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, great presentation. Well, it's a great presentation, very sobering, but really appreciate the time and effort. As someone who's just rolled off from the liaison to the Human Services Commission for what, the last four years, I know the great work that has been happening at the commission level. I believe our chair is with us this evening. And, you know, these are just very sobering statistics, and I'm glad you can be here to add some additional insight and color into it as well. I mean, bottom line, my perspective, we have to do more. We have to do more, as I continue to advocate for doing more. And more is not just more money. More is, as you've mentioned numerous times, having the cultural competency, for example, to address people's needs, to meet them where they are, to help them fill out forms, you know, to work with those service providers that can get to those underserved communities that we have a difficult time getting to or approaching at times, understand what their needs are. So this is really in-depth report. I think it really goes to what we need, some of the things that stand out for me, as I've heard time and time again, you know, was the food insecurity, the housing, obviously, the mental health piece, the suicide. That high number across the board of consideration of suicide is very dramatic and very concerning. The fentanyl, we've known, we've been in a crisis for quite some time now, and we need to do more to address that. And then the childcare, I guarantee if we could offer more childcare services, we would see that unemployment rate go down as you noted, but unfortunately, due to its being so incredibly expensive, they either don't work or they're underemployed because it is so dramatically expensive. It is unbelievable. When you're like a tech couple and you can barely afford it, how does anyone else afford it in this city? So, again, more needs to be done. I had one question for you, and that is in regards on slide number 11, about the number of students experiencing homelessness right now. I believe, Tony, you mentioned that the reason that the school district said the numbers have gone up so dramatically was the cost of housing. I'm sure that does play into it, but the cost of housing in our city has been going on for quite some time. So to see such a dramatic increase for the 2022, 2023, it makes me think something else is going on more than just that. Of course, that's a consideration, but given that housing costs have been so expensive for such a prolonged period of time, what other insights do you have that might explain why that has really jumped over that last year?
Yeah, thank you for your comments and for your support. It's a little bit speculative on my part, but it's connecting other data points, and so I think it's probably a fair speculation. We, as you know, have heard of so many families whose resources were completely depleted in the pandemic and who were really just barely squeaking by, whose job stability may have been lost. And so many households are still in recovery mode, and whereas they may have had some resources to draw on in the past when rent went up to try to make it work, I think we are still seeing that lack of stability for many households that have not recovered to what happened to them during that time. Some of them still have not seen their hours completely restabilize, and we are seeing that there are households that experienced crisis during that time that never experienced it before. And those households we, you know, we heard about in areas, you heard from Dr. Beers about them not knowing where to access resources because it was a new experience for them. So I think you have a combination of factors that while, you know, at that moment, the cost of housing is likely what led to their loss of housing stability, some contributing factors, I think, are other depleting resources.
Great, thank you so much.
You're gonna have a whole nother presentation on the strategies, and we can ask questions then, but you are the liaison to the Human Services Commission, Councilmembers on, and I'm sure you wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. I did get a briefing on this, and I think the data is very sobering. I think for me, the couple of things that came to mind is, it's one thing to say, oh, the severely cost burden went from 15 to 18%, but it's really the number, right? 27,960 residents, though every single one of those is a person. And so when we think about how we do more around prevention, because it also makes me wonder, just like the one-night count is probably undercounted, I wonder, as we look at our needs assessment, whether in all these different categories, these numbers are also undercounted, that is, we try to reach some of the folks that are struggling the most. We are not necessarily reaching all of the people to get a sense for how they're doing. So as I look at all of this, it makes me just think about the fact that in all these different categories, there's likely an undercounting. And as you said, as we have our funding landscape with CARES and ARPA have gone away or concluding, what does that really look like? So I guess my question to you is, when you look at the data, are there any surprises to you that you would say, wow, coming into this, because we do these every two years, these couple of areas are actually a surprise even to us? I'm just curious about that. As we launch into strategic planning, you know, what other insights related to this or surprises did you find?
I can highlight for myself and welcome input from the other two here at the table. I think we all know the impacts of racism and discrimination. It will still never quit catching me off guard, the disparities that it leads to, and in this report, you see it in almost every single service area. And so while you can cognitively know something, watching the data validate it and highlight the huge disparities that exist for some of our community members, you know, to use a word several of you have used, is very sobering. I think throughout hearing from the community, our panel to the commission, the data itself, the needs of our youth, that they are experiencing around behavioral health and kind of emotional turmoil, which again, multiple things I think are contributing to that, combined with the shortage of providers in that area, is a kind of a compounding issue that really stands out very strongly in the data.
You know, and I think it was the first slide that you had on here, Tony. I think even though we know the demographics of our city, it's kind of startling to see the lack of access for people who don't speak English as their primary language. I mean, those statistics are dramatic and shouldn't be surprising, but they really are.
Yeah, I was gonna highlight, I think what was most, maybe sobering, maybe not surprising, but sobering is the combination, I think, of what the two of you are sharing. So recognizing that we know that these disparities exist in a variety of social determinants of health, and then the access point. We know that access to many of these services is challenging for everyone, but I would say, in terms of the community engagement, when we were out having conversations, focus groups in the community, really the specific challenge of accessing services when they don't exist, either based on language or cultural needs, was a key driver, I think, in how we began to think about strategy as well.
Yeah, those are really helpful, so, because what I heard you saying is, it's both areas where we don't actually have the resources, as well as the places where the resources are available, but we don't have access. And one of the things I also heard you say is transportation is a challenge, and we know that our bus service hasn't all come back. And so even if we have resources, how do the community actually get access? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Councilmember Zahn, Newon House, passion and comments on this topic. I wanted to also echo, it is deeply saddens me to see these ongoing challenges of homelessness, hunger, healthcare access. I think no one should have a struggle with these basic humans. I love the data, and I think data is amazing, but, and the insight is great, but they are human beings we are talking behind this data, and I think we should be very aware of that. Appreciate to see what is the next presentation looks like, that how, what are we learning here and what we are going to do. But I have just one question. The insight that you learned, has there been similar study for our different neighbor cities, the same need analysis, and have you found any similarities or any differences between what is happening in Bellevue and what is happening in our other neighbor cities?
I think I would have to reference if they've done formal needs updates. Some of them have incorporated into a strategic plan. We kind of split ours into two documents, so it does exist in some forms. As you saw on the screen, some of the data that we referenced was at a regional level for the reasons that you're referencing, and we also then did follow up with exploring what it looks like in Bellevue, but it, you know, our residents don't exist in a vacuum as we all know, and so those needs are intersectional across several cities. I don't think there's any need that we highlighted there. We didn't look into other school districts, and so that would be one that we didn't explore. But otherwise, I believe it would be safe to say those needs are existing in our region.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for the data. I appreciate it. The question is, what do we do with the data? And I think, you know, when we have the data, we have to have action. And then we want to see how to deliver the action, so it actually addresses, you know, the problem that we see from the data. Then ultimately, we need to see what result we get, whether we are action, proper actions are actually making a difference. So I'm anxious to look at the next step, your strategy plan, and then we hopefully to get, work with you to get, understand what they are, so hopefully we'll move forward. This is something we will know, it all affects us, so there are a lot of information we can get from you, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, hold on by.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think it's all been said so far is interesting. It's basically two things when you get to it. It's the cost of living, particularly for people who are not at certain levels. And, I mean, cost of everything has just doubled. I mean, it's very difficult on that. And the second is the acceleration of racism and otherisms and division. And so you put those two things together, and people who are of color or other not, you know, the norm in the community, and they can't get and make a living, it's tough. I mean, it's gotten worse in that sense. It's, things are going better in some ways in the economy, but it's not coming down to people who really need it. And I think what we've laid out has been very good in this, and I'm looking forward to the next part of this, and what's the strategic plan on this? How can we make this work? And it means we're gonna have to make more investments when it comes down to it, in all kinds of ways. But I think very, very good to bring this to us and look at this. I think you're hitting what we need to do, and the question is, and I'm glad we're looking at this from the strategic part, how do we, how do we make changes? How can we move things? And that's what we're focusing on. So I really appreciate that, and I think I'm looking forward to us actually getting to work on that. So I appreciate the presentation and your insights. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. You know, it doesn't feel any better to kind of go through the report with you here tonight than it did to having the briefing, or than it did to go over it in preparation for the meeting tonight. I just find the information just alarming and really heartbreaking. And I think without this report, you know, just to kind of hold this tragedy and to be able to do something about it would be really difficult. I think that would be really overwhelming. So I appreciate the work and the difficulty that went into it. I think you've produced a great report. It's the exact kind of tool that I think all of us here need, that folks at the city and our providers out in the community really need it so that we can move forward and address some of these really significant challenges. Some of the things that really jumped out at me, the, talking about community members and providers, noted communication, collaboration, and convening as a key theme. Certainly, you know, no surprise there. I think, you know, we really want to encourage that and pursue, you know, community members to work alongside us, kind of co-design those service models. I think that's really excellent. And, you know, also too, it was noted, you know, that it's, and certainly not new information, but regarding the difficulty that our human services and nonprofit care partners and the whole field to attract and retain staff is really a challenge. I'm glad we're continuing to shine a light on that. And, you know, asking people to do this difficult work and to earn 30% less than they could with similar responsibilities in other fields is really too much. So I'm glad that it looks like we're kind of getting past that and not thinking that way anymore, and I'm glad to have seen that in the report as well. Certainly look forward to the next report, seeing what we can do with this information to do some good in the community, because we certainly know there's a tremendous need. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I really appreciate my colleagues' comments. What strikes me in looking at this report is that less than half of the people know where to access help if they feel like their housing is threatened. And knowing that it's so much easier to keep somebody in their home and cost-effective than it is to rehouse somebody, and the emotional toll and the trauma that you can prevent from keeping somebody housed makes me really anxious about how do we get that 52% of people who feel threatened in their housing, the information they need so they can contact whomever and say, hey, I'm not sure I can make my payments next month, and get the assistance that they need. So I'm gonna be really interested in figuring out how we connect those dots for people who are in need, because we have a lot of programs, and if we don't have enough programs, then we need to know that and act on it. So this data is really super helpful for us to vote on a strategic plan and to put a budget behind it. So with that, I'm anxious for the next step.
Thank you for your expediency. I'm just going to say that we are going to be joined additionally at the table by Human Services Commission Chair Jimmy Singh, and our presenters will continue with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you once again, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council once again. So thank you for your questions and engagement on the first part of the presentation this evening, the 2324 needs update. So we're now shifting to the Human Services Strategic Plan, and I want to thank you, Human Services Commission Chair Singh, for joining us this evening. So tonight, we'll seek direction from the council to return with a resolution on a future consent calendar to adopt the consent calendar to adopt the 2024 through 2030 Human Services Strategic Plan. As you will see, the strategic plan establishes objectives and actions and helps prioritize how the city addresses human services needs. And it's not a budget request at this point, but it will be used to inform a future budget request. So I will now turn over the presentation to Chair Singh to provide background and the Human Services Commission's endorsement of the plan.
Okay. Good evening, Councilmember, and thank you, Director Shiasaki. The Human Services Commission has received drastically increased requests for the human services funding, both in number of applications and amounts, requests nearly doubling the funds available. I have been on the commission for, this is my second year, and the lot of applications almost doubled. Human Services Strategic Plan has, that will be presented this evening, focusing on the question, what can we do differently with the available sources to best address community need and equal, equitable investments in human services system? And throughout the pandemic, the Bellevue City Council had made incredible investments in the human services infrastructure. Between 2020 and 2024, the council invested more than additional 20 million to support the needs of our most marginalized community members. Low and moderate income households continue to feel the impacts of pandemic. Community members who are already marginalized continue to feel the disproportionate impacts. With pandemic funding coming to an end, this strategic plan will provide critical guidance to the work of the human service staff and Human Services Commission, helping us to discern how to prioritize and make different, difficult decisions. The objectives and the action you will hear tonight are directly informed by data gathered from the community with, which was just reported to you in 2023 and 2024 Human Services Needs Update. The plan is already directly informed by the feedback provided to council and the Human Services Commission. The commission endorsed this plan on December 5th, 2023. Thank you for the tremendous support for the human services in the community and the opportunity to serve the Human Services Commission. I will turn it over to Assistant Director Tony to discuss the plan.
Thank you, Chair Singh. A few additional details about the chart in front of you. The green and red squares represent city funding for human services. Green is the city's human services fund, which comes directly from the general fund. Red is funds from the Housing Stability Program, which is funded by a one-tenth of a percent sales tax. And as you know, a portion of these funds go towards behavioral health and housing-related human services, and a portion goes toward onsite services for the projects receiving capital funding from the Housing Stability Program. The council's investment in this very critical area shows with the growing red square, which represents only the services funding, not the capital. Blue is the funds from the Community Development Block Grant, a federal source of funds, and yellow is the city's significant investment into human services with one-time pandemic funding. Those funds will all be spent by the end of 2024. The most significant investment of these dollars, including for the remaining year, has been in rent assistance to help keep our residents housed. We will now transition into the content of the Human Services Strategic Plan. We will provide an overview of the four objectives proposed in the plan. Feedback from council, along with feedback from the commission, in conjunction with the data that you heard about this evening from the community, informed the development of these four objectives and their corresponding actions to support them. Dr. Beers and I will provide a brief recap for each objective of the data that went to inform them. Objective number one on the screen focuses on increasing equity and data-driven decision-making in making Bellevue's human services funding decisions, and prioritizing the city's human services investments in the areas of greatest disparity. Dr. Beers?
This objective was informed by several key pieces, key pieces of community feedback that we referenced earlier. The first was the emphasis on the desire for co-design with impacted communities, as well as the need to increase access to culturally and linguistically support, linguistically specific supports. Additionally, this was, this was informed by some of the pieces we were just speaking to, which is just the overwhelming need and something, the unmet need we see across areas, and the need to increase our targeted response to unmet service needs that we identified in the community.
And directly from you, the council, we heard several great pieces of feedback as well. You asked us to consider, how do we get the dollars out the door differently? You encouraged us to continue to advance and improve equitable funding, and that you valued an equity-centered process in our agency funding. You encouraged the use of an equitable funding framework. You also expressed an interest in wanting to understand the connection back to the community for the services we are providing and to understand the impact of those investments. So the actions aligned with this objective, which will span three slides. So Objective One spans three slides. So we'll go first over the ones on the screen here. A commitment to use the data, particularly to identify disparities and gaps, which you saw in that report, and a commitment to keep doing that. And then to use that data to invest the city's human services dollars most deeply into these areas of disparity, which will provide critical guidance to the commission when they're called upon to make difficult funding recommendations. And this responds to council's request to center equity and consider ways to get the dollars out the door differently. In very practical terms, this would move us away from spreading our funding thinly across the vast majority of requests, and instead move towards investing more deeply into the areas of greatest need and disparity. Another action with this objective is our continued commitment to providing equity training for commissions and staff involved in the funding application review process. Slide two, still Objective One, Continued Actions. This focuses on a series of priorities that will be used to guide funding recommendations. The commission will use the data we just reviewed from the needs update, but further priorities will be placed on joint proposals that incorporate collaborative efforts to solve complex systemic issues, a priority for those that can provide culturally or linguistically specific human services, and a priority for the provision of services that fill service gaps for our most marginalized community members. These priorities will be published in a rubric, which increases equity and transparency in our decision-making. And again, will help our commission in their decision-making process. And again, should shift us from a change from our previous approach, which spread thinly, and instead will focus us more deeply on gaps and disparities. And then last slide for Objective Number One, Remaining Actions. In response to feedback, we heard about increasing equity and funding and understanding connection to services, and in response to the community's feedback about the need for increased participation at decision-making tables, this action calls for including community members in the deliberation and review of applications, along with the commission. The commission, the Human Services Commission, will still hold the role created by council, with the commission holding the ultimate responsibility for sending recommendations back to you for consideration, but it will allow for more voices to contribute to the deliberations. Another action commits to ongoing data analysis to measure the impact of these priorities. To a comment that was made earlier, the plan calls for what we do, and this calls for us reflecting and seeing what the impact of what we do actually is. And then to increase the understanding of the connection between the services funded and the community, we will be publishing a dashboard on the deep investments that you make into human services, and there is a very early draft in the back of the plan. Moving to Objective Number Two. This objective focuses on increasing access, support, and funding for organizations that serve our most marginalized residents, including agencies who have not previously received funding from the city. And Dr. Beers will share what we heard from the community that informed this objective.
As an Objective One, this, this objective is similarly informed by that desire to co-design with impacted communities. However, additionally, one of the key pieces of feedback that was driving this objective was that piece around communication and collaboration, really that collaboration piece, both amongst service providers and between the city and service providers, and particularly how, what are the opportunities to partner with organizations that may have not partnered historically with the city, but increasing access to those funds and have the support needed to access those funds. And finally, this really closely tied to that, this action was again driven by that pronounced need for additional culturally and linguistically supported services.
And then from you, the council, we heard feedback including the value for an equity-centered process, request that the level, the playing field get leveled for agencies. You specifically expressed an interest that we continue to meet with agencies and support their access to funding, providing technical assistance, that we help those who don't know how to access funding. And then from multiple of you, we heard a value in capacity building. And as we listened closely to you, we heard that mean a number of different things. One being an emphasis on the pay that goes to agencies and helping ensure that they can provide equitable wages to their employees. Also, capacity building meant expanding services to the community by funding new agencies that are responsive to the community's diversity, and supporting the development of agencies' internal resources. So the actions for Objective Number Two that support that focus on expanding our outreach to community-based organizations, to perhaps less-developed organizations, to those that have not received city funding. It focuses on amplifying funding opportunities and providing technical assistance, both in the application and in the contracting process, once they're awarded funds. And then in response to the council feedback about creating a level playing field, capacity building for agencies, really honing in on that equitable pay to agencies and agency sustainability, this objective will adopt the practice of a standardized 20% for indirect and administrative costs in human services contracts with city funds. In addition, this objective represents the city's commitment to invest in the infrastructure of the human services continuum, and it responds to community feedback expressing the very many challenges that are being experienced by our human services providers. Objective Three focuses on expanding culturally and linguistically specific human services in the city of Bellevue. Dr. Beers will talk about community feedback.
This objective was really designed to, to really expand upon the expressed value we heard in community engagement of services created for and, and delivered by individuals from the communities that they serve. Again, to come back to that theme that, that we observed in the data, that the, the human services infrastructure in Bellevue has not been able to keep pace with the changing demographics, and what that has translated into is that those who have, that we have a significant population who has cultural and linguistic needs from human service providers and cannot find the providers to meet those needs.
And from the council, we heard that trusted messengers are important. We heard an elevation of racism as a public health crisis. A request to expand services to the community by funding new agencies that are responsive to Bellevue's diversity, and again, the request that we continue to meet with agencies to support their access to funding. And while the actions for this objective are brief and short, they will have significant impact. It focuses on gathering data relative to this very specific gap, and then setting funding priorities and targets to fill that gap. As reported in the needs update, while there is a shortage in many of our services, there is an even greater shortage in this area, even while there are disproportionate impacts already on our marginalized communities in almost every service area. Last objective, Objective Number Four focuses on increasing community awareness of the changing needs of the Bellevue community and inviting collaboration from stakeholders. Dr. Beers?
This objective was really driven by feedback we received around the, some of the unique roles that the city can, can play and can, is already playing and can expand on, in terms of facilitating collaboration, kind of within the various players within the human services ecosystem, and also being nimble in responding to the, the changing needs that organizations identify. We, we referenced some of the challenges that providers are facing to put a little bit more, a number behind that. In the provider survey, we heard that nearly two-thirds of organizations are facing changes in the availability of funding sources and, and are reporting concerns about what that means. So it's, it requires us to look at new solutions for what role can the, the city play to bring different players together to address some of those concerns.
And in addition, we heard from you a request that we explore ways to maximize the impact of every dollar. And again, to the theme of capacity building, that seemed to, further, we heard from you an emphasis on collaboration in the community when that was discussed. So as we know, the needs of the Bellevue community have been rapidly changing, and it's important that all of our stakeholders in the community understand the dynamics and the needs of the community that they serve. So the actions for this objective include outreach to community stakeholders, including businesses and community groups, and then commits to us serving as a bridge to make connections between interested stakeholders and the agencies who serve our community, so that increased collaboration and partnership can occur. Director Shiasaki, I'll turn it back over to you.
So that ends the strategic plan, and we'd like to move this on to questions from you at the council.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Zahn, as liaison to human services, let's start with you.
Yes, oh, thank you. Again, thank you very, very much for this really important work that you've done to give us a really excellent strategic plan going forward. I think that ultimately, all of these actions are really important to give us the holistic view of what we need to do. And I guess I, I just want to lift up a couple of them, and then I think I've heard from fellow councilmembers that, you know, the level of funding, so although this is not a budget request, I think we've certainly seen the, although we were able to scaffold with the CARES and ARPA funds the last couple of years, that funding isn't available anymore. And my sense is that the idea that every one of these agencies that requested funding got a really big haircut over the last funding cycle is not sustainable. So my hope is that we can actually come up with ways to fund for the need that we see in the community in a much broader way. I would say that for me, what I'm really excited about is the fact that we are looking at the co-design and centering community voices, especially the piece, as I'm stepping into the Liaison for Human Services, right, how we make sure that in the very process for our grant application, the design and the review process, that we find ways to bring community voice, especially those that are the recipient, or I think you were talking about consumers of the services, how we actually make sure that their voice is part of the process. I think that's really important. The cultural and linguistic specific services, I really appreciate that. And then the equitable wages, I guess my question there is, I know it said 20% kind of set aside or, or allowable for overhead costs, and better understanding where we came up with that number, and, and does that mean that it, that most of the agencies we're talking about fits within that? I'm just concerned that we are not creating a restriction without really understanding what percentage they really need to be able to, to do that. And actually, that's really one of my holistic questions, is making sure as we go along that we actually set up the organizations for success, so if they need the funds to be supporting the community of, you know, buying a tire so that they can continue to work and not be, become unemployed, that those funds are not so restricted, that it doesn't give them the ability to serve the very community that they need to, and maybe on the food side, it's making sure it's linguist, or, you know, culturally appropriate foods. So I think those are pieces that, to me, are really important. And, and then I'm especially excited about how we get the funding out differently. I'm hoping that what you mean by that is getting it out sooner, so that the very administrative burden that sometimes the grant funding process has, that we're able to get as many dollars as possible to serve the very communities that we're trying to serve, as well as equitable wages, and less in sometimes the administrative paperwork that's, that comes along with the funds. So I don't know if there's really a question in there, so much as just excited about every one of these recommendations, and hope that we're able to get to the kind of funding budget that gets to these kinds of really deep need.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn.
Yep, good comments. Councilmember Hamilton, how about you?
So I think, you know, obviously focusing on these long-term strategies, that makes a lot of sense, so really happy to see that. Just a couple of quick things. I hope that in Objective One, we might be able to encourage Just a couple of quick things, I hope that in objective one, we might be able to encourage active sharing and collection of data so that we can pull in community partners of different types to provide data ongoing and, and that we can share what we have with them. I think objective two is really critical, especially number four, very important, glad to see that. I think you've, you've put together a really good strategic plan. I look forward to seeing how it's implemented and helping out, and I, like Councilmember Zahn said, you know, what do we need to do later in the budget process to make sure that we are really funding our priorities and, and getting on top of human services needs in a even more serious way? So, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes?
This is a really great plan. I'm, I'm very pleased to see that we're, I mean, I love the idea of having a strategy. We, you know, it's not just, it's not a plan now, it's a strategy. It's how are we going to implement all this stuff? And so we're going forward on that. And I appreciate the, you're looking at this from a standpoint of, well, obvious change that we're dealing with is, is really difficult, but I think, you know, peanut butter strategy is not effective for the most highest needs. I mean, that's, it's, it's, we want to get everybody have something, but you're, you're focusing on what can accomplish the most, where you can get to, to people that need real help on it, and it's going to take more money to do that, but I think that's, that's very good. And I'm glad to see the focus is really on getting concrete help to the most people, something that really makes a difference in their life, and not just, well, let's give something, they can do something now and then, like that. I think that's, it's, it's a very well-laid-out plan. I'm really excited to see that, and looking forward to us putting it together. And I think the thing that's going to be, is very helpful in this whole piece is that you've done an excellent job of going in and kind of dissecting what's going on in the communities, who needs help, how, what kind of help it is, and how can we address these things? Because we, and we're addressing the, the most serious needs at this point, the ones where we can really give help to people, but we need more to go. So I see this as a plan, and then the, the implementation of this will lead us to, I think, better, more effective work even in the future. So you're, you're doing something that's not just, again, well, let's do this here and there, like we've kind of done in the past, because we want to help everybody, and you have some guidelines, and you're setting up, I think, the effectiveness for the people implementing these plans is very, is good too. So it's, it's, it's a big step forward, I think, in terms of how we're putting this together and how we're going to address this. The only thing we need is a whole lot more money, but that's, we'll work on that. But I, I think it's going to be very good, and look forward to working with you to, to make it effective and, and keep it going as we go along. And appreciate the Human Services Commission, and they worked on that, and the work that Councilmember New, Newenhouse did before working on this, and you, and Janice Zahn, Councilmember Zahn's going to really work hard on this, and we're all going to work on it. So we have a, we're all very involved and very, definitely in on getting this to work. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Well, thank you, Chairman Singh, and I appreciate, you know, the public citizens' support and input and help. A wonderful report that they have come up with. As I mentioned, I love your first piece of data, and then I was looking forward to your action. And even though we want everything to be done, obviously, right, everything, maybe even more we haven't thought about, but you have not disappointed me. I'm very happy what you've come up with. You know, specifically, you talk about capacity building. I think you have heard us, and I'm the one that's been harping on that, because I believe in people helping people, helping themselves, and that's most direct, most effective, and the most sustainable. And so you talk about, you know, language, trusted messenger, and to, in order to have accessibility, they've got to be able to do that, and they have to be able to communicate, to know what the system, how the system works. And so I think you have talked about the emphasis. I believe these are the things that, you know, you have said. And so, obviously, you know, I, I would say that in your action four and three, especially four, you have a lot of specific things and to address those. One thing I was going to say is, you mentioned about organization. Sometimes, you know, the population, the community that need more help, they don't have organization, they don't even know how to organize. So I think it's important to figure out how to help them so that they become, you know, effective, which is why you talk about start with language and culture. And so, it takes money, obviously. So I suggest one of the area, you're looking at a CDBG fund, you know, that's really been stagnant, and if it goes up, you don't know how much, how far. So I think we need to put some attention to get some more money, to be able to do more programs and do it more effectively. And you mentioned about administrative costs, you know, it's good, because that's part of the help a new organization should need. Normally, they don't have the resources. That's why they are looking for help from us. So if you can make that happen, that would be very helpful. And also, you know, collective effort, you know, that's part of the reason why, you know, your involvement, directing them, helping them, it makes a lot of sense. And so I look forward to all these things. By doing that, I can, you know, if you build your result looking for and assess the result, and we can share with you, and then we can move step by step, because there, again, there's so many things we can do. I'm not going to say, hey, I want that, I want this, want that, because it's not realistic. And you just have to do whatever you think that's, you know, within your funding. So, come to us. That's what the city council is here for. If we can hear you do things that bring result, that actually make a difference, we're going to do whatever we can. We have to prioritize you, and we have to give you the adequate funding if possible. So that's why we are, we are here to help you. So thank you for this program. I look forward to making progress, making a difference, and with the commission's help, push them. Make sure you have, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead, because I'm afraid I'm going to forget my thought if I wait till the end. So, appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Jimmy, for taking on that role and doing such a good job. Really appreciate that. So, in objective three, I hope that, you know, I know you're kind of broad and you're, you're very, I'm so direct, and, and I apologize for that, but I really feel like we need a navigator, you know? From what I hear, the 211 information system for people just really doesn't work for the people that I talk to that seem to really be in need, and so I would love to see this city create its own navigator system with partners, of course. And then, objective four, you talk about increasing outreach to our public-private partnerships. I would love you to say, can we get some funding from them? You know? I mean, what's really hitting the budget is, one, increased need, and, two, that we now want to pay living wages so that the people who are providing the services are not also suffering from a low wage in a very expensive place to live. And so those are two things we cannot help. That's, that's nothing to do with anything other than the need out there. And so, that's a lot more money than we put out in the past that we really need to do. And so, I hope that under objective four, you put that out there, that maybe we talk to our, our public-private partnerships and talk about the community needs and the fact, what I just said, those two things really hitting the budget, and see if we might get some assistance from some of our partners out there.
Madam Mayor, sorry to interrupt. With my enthusiasm, I forgot to mention a couple of things.
Let me finish first.
That's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that you, thank you.
Yes, you are next.
Thanks.
And I'm done. I think I'm done. Anyway, is, did I miss it? Is it already in there, or, or is that something maybe we can add to the objectives?
I, I, I think there's an acknowledgement of the need that you are expressing. We also know that a person's desire or an entity's desire to get involved comes with first understanding what the need is. And so, we're starting with, how do we help you understand the need? Because new to our community or only engaging in certain places might mean you don't know what the need is. Again, these statistics are pretty sobering. And then there's also an acknowledgement, I think, that different companies might be able to help in different ways. If you're a food-based company, maybe you have food.
Right.
And so it may look like money, it may look like something else. And so, we're inviting them in to first educate about the need and then see how they might be a partner to help.
Well, I don't see that, that, that last step spelt out, so I would love to have that a little more spelt out, because I do think that's an expectation of part of that, that objective number four. It is, it is for me, anyway.
So it's education plus.
Yeah, engagement.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. In your previous report, you know, on page seventeen, eighteen, you talked about a couple of things. One is mental health, okay? I didn't see you specifically addressing maybe a particular population, because to me, there's some insight to it. Youth mental health is very, very important, and it's something that we know it's there, but we don't have all the complete data. Sometimes we have data. I know the Asian youth, mental health is a big problem, but culturally, they don't let people know about their health, mental health problem, because they think it's an embarrassment. They keep it to themselves, and it doesn't get noticed, it doesn't get cheated, so it just keep on going until it's too late, and they come with suicide, you don't know what it is, you know, it's odd. So that's one area maybe we should take a look at. Second is indigenous people and black people, you mentioned on your page eighteen. So I think indigenous people are definitely, you know, it is, we don't have too many here in the east side, but in fact, they are a very crucial population community, and we don't have much program to address that particular population. So I hope that we can take a look at that and see, maybe not in Bellevue, but it's for sure, in terms of the percentage population-wise, it's a, you know, a major human service problem for our region and for this country. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, again, for the second great presentation. Thank you, Chair, for being here and helping draft all of this great plan. I just wanted to have three comments to highlight something, and then I have one quick questions. First, to maybe kind of bring the comment that Councilmember Zahn brought, that why is 80%, 20%? I think my belief is, all of these government contract has a requirement that they just pay 80% of the work to these nonprofits, and they are, the requirement is 20% of that should come from that nonprofit. And I think that's the model that nonprofit has that doesn't make sense to me, because in construction, if you bid in a contract, you do the material labor, all of the engineering work, and also you have an overhead and all of those costs, and that's the full cost is. Nonprofit doesn't have that. So I really appreciate that you guys are starting this amazing 20% and include that in the nonprofit. I don't know what is the number, but I think one out of seven nonprofit is going out of nonprofit business because of this model, so hopefully that helps these nonprofits to survive. That was one comment. I appreciate your whole high-level strategy to not have a peanut butter. So I, I really recommend you guys communicate that with everyone who expect money from you, that before they receive money, but now maybe because of our priorities, they don't receive money, these nonprofits, budgeting is really, really complex, they always having hypothesis that they can receive this money, and now if they don't, it completely blow up their budget out of any reality. The one last thing that I wanted to say is, you mentioned some rubric kind of stuff that you want to go, and all great stuff, but I hope that doesn't add a burden on the nonprofits. I know how hard is to this admin work, how, how much is to hire a grant writer or all of those for these nonprofits. So hopefully, we are helping them, this rubric is for us, we are not adding more burden on this nonprofit. And then my question is, in the objective one, all of these plan that we have addressed the current needs effectively, and it's great, we are reacting to the current needs. But can we discuss potential investment in preventive measures that, that we don't even know right now, using technology and innovative partnership? There are lots of stuff that we can do that is cheaper if we pre- prevent than when it happens. So I recommend to add something like that to objective one, that how can we be more preventative and using technology, using data to make, and again, innovative partnerships to prevent something from happening and become a community risk? Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Newenhouse?
Thank you. Chair Singh, again, thank you for being here this evening. You're a true credit to the commission, and I'm so proud to have appointed you two years ago, so thank you for being here. I'm, I'm so glad to hear my, my colleagues also kind of, as, as I've been advocating for in terms of increasing the funding here, it's desperately needed, and as, as, as so many of my colleagues have, have, have mentioned, so that's a step in the right direction. I know it's not funding tonight, but I think we're all aligned on that, and that's just really great to hear. On the, on the data, and Councilmember Lee touched on this, about the importance of the data upfront, and understanding the needs, the, the, the specific needs, but then, for me, what's also just as important is following that data through the entire cycle, right? And Tony's looking at me, she's heard, probably heard me say this before, all the way through to the, to, to the very end, and I'm so glad that we have a dashboard here to look at the true impact of, because I think everybody is in favor, and I bet if we talk to any residents, they're in favor of increasing the funding, they just want to make sure that taxpayer dollars are going to the right providers, the right agencies, and we see the right, right outcomes. Now, I know sometimes that can be very challenging in the human services realm, but, and, and depending on the need, that might be different metrics that we're going to want to, to track. But I really think it's important that, be it housing insecurity, food insecurity, mental health, et cetera, that we be truly be able to highlight in that dashboard the real impact that we're having, or lack of an impact that we're having, maybe due to funds or due to the, the, the wrong approach, or we don't have those trusted voices, or there's more work, that work that we need to do as a city. I think that's really going to highlight the kind of work that we need to do going forward. I just want to, there's not really a question there, but I just want to emphasize the importance of that, we don't lose track of that, because it's really going to point how successful or not successful we are in terms of addressing these, these issues, some of which we, we've already started addressing. I mean, the fact that we do these technical assistance now with those providers that are asking for funds from, from our human services fund, of which there was twice as much asked for last time around in our funding cycle than we actually had money for, so, but then, and then there again, perfect example, we help on the front end, but we help them all the way through the process as well, as, as well as the reporting at the end of the year, or the end of the funding cycle. That's just as important, that we help them with that, especially if they're a newer agency or provider, or early stage, or this is the first time they've ever received funds from the city. It's so important that we help them all the way through that, all the way through that process, just don't deliver them a check and, and say, good luck now. So, so really glad, glad to see that on there, and this is a great strategic plan. The objectives are on point. I am very enthusiastic that we're going to have, make a bigger impact here, and thank you so much, Tony, as you kind of laid out, really hearing the council in terms of our, wanting to increase capacity, wanting to increase our, our ability to deliver and deliver effectively, et cetera. I think you've really captured all those notes accurately this evening, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Zahn, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let me find the piece of paper, so I'm making it the correct way. I move to direct staff to return to council with a resolution adopting the human services strategic plan, and can we do that on consent?
Yes, hold on, please. To your question, yes. I just want to interrupt you for one sec. I kind of made a change to the strategy on on four, asking you to actually specify looking for funding. Is that something we need to vote on? If we're going to amend that or is that something you can take a head nod on?
I can take that as a friendly amendment.
Well, let's see if we need an amendment or if we can add it in.
Repose and see if it's amenable to all of you. So you're talking about objective four, number three. We could make it more explicit. It says facilitate opportunities for stakeholders to respond. We could put including financial indirect in kinds, we could put examples of ways they could respond. Would that meet what you're hoping for?
And I would like to, I want to make sure the council's okay with that. So am I getting head nods? Okay, all right. So I don't think we need to make an amendment. I think that you can continue and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, well, I think that I, I made the motion.
You finished it? Okay. And you seconded it? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There we go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, council, do we need to take another break or do you think we can get through the next item? Okay, let's, let's keep going. All right, city manager, could you please introduce the last study session item?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a presentation on proposed changes to the council meeting day and frequency of council meetings. Staff is going to provide background on what was initially proposed to council in 2023 as well as earlier this year, both of which inform tonight's recommendation. Staff is requesting council consideration, consider directing staff to prepare legislation to amend the council rules of procedure and the Bellevue City Code concerning the meeting day and the frequency of meetings. And joining at the table, we have Charmaine Aradondo, our city clerk, and Liesel Olson, a performance and process analyst. And with that, I will turn it over to Charmaine and Liesel.
Thank you, city manager, mayor and councilmembers. We are happy to be here with you this evening. As the city manager indicated, we're bringing you a couple of alternatives to the status quo for the day of meeting or the day of the week that the council meets and the frequency. So Liesel Olson here is our performance and process analyst in the clerk's office. You may recognize her from her many presentations about fifteen ninety funding during COVID. But she is doing a lot of our work on process improve, sorry, process improvements within the city clerk's office specifically related to the council agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Liesel.
Great. Thank you, Charmaine. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we'll be providing a brief overview of the conversation to date, discuss the proposed alternatives and implementation plan. As Charmaine mentioned, these alternatives would require an amendment to the city code and the council's rules and procedures. And so we would return for action at future council meeting. So a quick background on, this topic has been to council recently before, but we wanted to just kind of give that brief overview. Staff had previously introduced a proposal to council that would have moved the council meetings from Monday to Tuesday evening and reduce the number of council meetings to three a month. The proposal didn't move forward at the time, but staff were asked to bring this topic back to council for consideration now. So the first alternative we'll be discussing tonight is moving the council meetings to Tuesday. While Bellevue's council meetings have traditionally met on Monday, council has expressed an interest in moving the meetings to Tuesday. The biggest benefit would be in giving us more time between the council agenda publication and the day of the meeting. Right now, there are two business days and this proposal would add, would move that to three business days between publication and the meeting day. Staff anticipate that we would be able to continue publishing the packet on Thursdays when possible. This change would be a benefit because it would allow community members additional time to review the agenda and really become informed on the topics before council. It would also give council members additional time to receive answers to questions and prepare for that meeting. So I will pause here and let, as we discuss that first alternative and look for council direction. So mayor, I'll turn this conversation back over to you at this point.
Okay, so I would like to entertain any comments or questions and then take a vote on just this item before we move on to the next one. So is everybody good with what's being recommended? I'm seeing some agreement. So would you like to make a motion, deputy mayor?
Of course. I move to direct staff to prepare legislation to amend council's rules of procedure and the Bellevue City Code changing the council's meeting day from Monday to Tuesday.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Go on.
Great, thank you. So the second, second topic we'll be discussing tonight is the frequency of the council meetings. On the screen before you, you'll see two options, the status quo, which is the first four meetings of the month, and the alternative, which is the first three meetings of the month. You'll notice that it currently reads Monday, given the change that we just made. I'll refer to it as Tuesday going forward. If council does not wish to change the meeting frequency, you may leave your council rules as is, which would be the status quo option. Council meetings would occur for the first four Tuesdays of the month. You would have the ability to cancel a meeting if it is not needed. You would also have the ability to schedule an additional special meeting based on council direction. In the past, this has occurred as a meeting on the fifth Monday of a month. We'll note that this hasn't happened in the past couple of years and it is somewhat limited based on the months that would actually have five weeks in them during a calendar year. Based on the current workload before council, we anticipate that we would still be able to probably cancel one meeting a month on average with the status quo option. The alternative before you would be having meetings on the first three Tuesdays of the month. This option would mimic what has currently been piloted over the past year, where three council meetings were held each month except for months with a council recess. To achieve that, we were currently canceling one meeting a month and that was typically happening around a holiday week, which meant that the cancellations would vary based on the month. For this alternative, setting the council meetings on the first three Tuesdays of each month would provide transparency for council members and community members. And based on what we've seen this past pilot, we believe that the three meetings a month would be accommodated with the current workload and in the time limit that's established for each council meeting. Now, of course, there are always instances where additional time might be needed to discuss council topics. An optional meeting can always be added to the schedule based on the need. A special meeting could be added to the calendar on the fourth Tuesday of each month to address emergent or important issues. And staff would aim to provide as much notice as possible to council before these special meetings are scheduled. I will go briefly into the implementation plan. So based on the direction tonight, we would draft legislation, legislation for future council action. As part of that legislation, we propose that any change made to the council meeting day or frequency would not go into effect until April. There are a number of changes that we are going to be needing to make to our internal timelines and procedures. So this would give staff enough time to make those changes to our processes, communicate any of these changes broadly to the public and continue to work with our affected boards and commissions that currently meet on Tuesday evenings. So with that, that concludes our presentation for tonight and we welcome any questions or feedback from you. Thanks.
Thank you for that. So I think I'll just start with a motion. Deputy Mayor, put that on the table if we want to amend it or whatever we can, but go ahead and start there.
Of course. I move to direct staff to prepare legislation to amend council's rules of procedure and the Bellevue City Code setting the frequency of meetings to the first three weeks of the month.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions on this? Okay, I'm seeing councilmembers on. Okay, councilmember Lee, why don't you start?
How do you determine that our current schedule is adequate with just three meetings? Have you talked to each of us, councilmembers, to determine that is the case?
I will turn to our city clerk.
So the way we've determined, we have had a twelve-month or about thirteen-month pilot for the three meetings per month. To answer your direct question, we have discussed a little bit at the council retreat and we've had some conversations with councilmembers. Yes.
We have not, we did not have a conclusion at the retreat.
No, we did not. That's why we are here tonight.
Because we don't vote on things at the retreat.
Understand, we're not voting on it, but discussion.
Yes.
So this is a time to have a discussion.
Yes.
Okay, and I have some, I asked a question. So I personally, I don't know whether the other council member believe that. I think it's important to have plenty of opportunity for council members to interact and dialogue and talk about issues. And the public, you know, would also appreciate hearing and more and participating in, you know, more information and opportunity to talk about issues. And so as I feel, I personally feel that we can use more conversation discussion. You know, it used to be, I remember, we have a special work sessions, study sessions, and we have lots of time to talk about issues. I believe there's value to it because I, instead of I making up my decision, you know, with limited conversation with my councilmembers, because we have rules against that, I think that's important to have real conversation discussion with, you know, full necessity to come up with, you know, final decisions. Because oftentimes, you know, the time we're limited at council, which we, I appreciate, we need to have very efficient, very, you know, council meetings. We cannot be too long. But that depends on setting the agenda. We set the agenda, giving us all the opportunity to discuss. But we have so many issues now, so many important. The public wants to know them and they're very important. And so I think it's important that I feel that way and I don't know what other council member feel. So it's important for me, if we don't need it, if we haven't got many issues, we cancel it. So it doesn't matter, right? It really has no material difference. That's what I'm trying to point out.
So I hear councilmember Lee saying he wants to leave things as they are, which would be a no vote. Okay, councilmember Zon.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm not convinced that I want to move from the status quo either. I guess my only comment on the alternative is that if we did make a choice to do that and maybe we do it now, maybe we consider it later. I would just point out that if we are selecting the first three Tuesdays of the month, that just this year, April, July and October, we literally would have three meetings and then two weeks with no meetings at all because of the fifth Tuesday. And so that is a long time not to have any meetings. And so I am concerned about this particular alternative as presented of being the first three weeks of the month versus the first, second and fourth or some other combination that doesn't create this issue whenever the likely three times a year that we would have these fifth Tuesdays. So I look forward to hearing from my colleagues. Like I said, I'm not convinced yet, but this alternative as written, I, I find problematic.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, let's let everybody speak.
No, you said that I opposed the motion. Really, I haven't said I opposed it. I just made the point.
Okay.
That points to the fact that we need to have conversation. If we don't have time to even talk about it, I'm a position to already cast.
We are talking about it. Councilmember Lee, we're talking about right now.
That's what I'm saying.
And I don't want you to introduce.
No, no, but I just want to interject that.
Interrupt deputy mayor's opportunity to voice his opinion. So go ahead.
I want to hear him, but I want him to hear me as well.
We heard you.
We heard you.
Well, I just said it. You didn't hear me before.
Three times.
Okay.
No, I just said it now. The reason is I want to have a conversation.
I really appreciate councilmember Lee and councilmember Zon's opinion. I, so you mentioned a pilot. That pilot was one year?
It's since January of last year, so a little over a year.
Over a year. And then we just stick with three meetings per?
Yeah, with the exception of August and December, which have less, we only meet one time per rule in August and two times in December.
So there was a pilot and the pilot was by data was successful that we just need three meetings?
Yes.
And then how much effort and energy of the staff and the city goes to preparation for one meeting? Just overall, high level, can you share that with me?
That's a great question, deputy mayor. Oh, I don't have an exact number to point or to provide to you for that. I can certainly get you a number, but generally the amount of effort is fairly significant to provide all of the materials for every meeting and including to the point of having the meeting where we have around fifteen-plus staff available at each meeting just to produce the meeting. The content within each department is developed and it goes through a rigorous review process. That's part of our internal procedures before it ever makes the publication for the packet. And that is a weekly cycle or for however many meetings that the council has.
And that fifteen is plus to those two police officers that are here for our safety?
Yes, yes.
So, so I think, I think councilmember Lee is on the point that there is no materially different between these two proposal. But I am very aligned with the three meetings and my reasoning is very straightforward. First, there was a pilot that was successful. We didn't, we didn't need the four meetings. There is more efficiency and productivity by knowing and having a consistent knowledge of there is a three meetings per month, so we can be very efficient in our agenda with our, eventually all of our planning. And then it mentioned in the slide that if we need additional one, we can know that in advance, a month in advance, and we can plan for that. So I do agree, there is no material difference between these two plan. But for all of this reason, I am aligned with having three meetings set. Everyone knows their, staff knows their plans, public knows their plans. We know our schedule and of course, a month ahead, we know that we need a meeting. We can add that to our calendar.
Thank you for your comments. Either of you want to say anything? Okay, councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, I think that the three meetings a month, the simple plan, something that's, that we all know well in advance is really helpful. That, I think, is going to help the public to be engaged and to provide their feedback. I think sometimes this venue can be a little bit challenging for folks to make it to, to come down on a Tuesday night and to be here to provide their comments on, on the work of council. And so I, I kind of look at this new plan as like a hybrid work plan where you have some days in the office and you have some days dedicated out. We would be dedicated to three meetings a month and then we would know that we would have one or two other options to meet with community members about a wide range of topics. I know for myself, I, I do keep some nighttime office hours, but not very many. And so I, I imagine that I'll be able to add some office hours so that I can have some meetings in it, you know, in that kind of hybrid work example, you know, dig a little more deeply into the community engagement part, which I, I think can really be challenging. And I think we, we should and can add meetings when we need to. So I, I think that, and I think there are times where we're going to know we need to. We have a lot of big things coming up this year, so I can imagine that, you know, come April, we'll have a good idea of when those additional meetings will be required. Though nothing prevents us from being able to add them more quickly than that. And I think like the deputy mayor said, you know, we will be, I think, maybe even a little bit more naturally efficient in the work that we do when we do have our council meetings. So I think we'll be a little bit more focused and, you know, definitely sure we're on the job. And if this doesn't work, you know, dramatically, which I think as the deputy mayor pointed out, we're, we're pretty sure because we've done it for thirteen months. We, we think we're going to do fine. But if for some reason it doesn't, we can always come back and change it and add that. So I definitely want to hear what my other colleagues have to say, but I think at this point, I, I lean towards moving to these three meetings a month as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I, I agree with my colleague, councilmember Hamilton on this. I think it's well, well stated. And we can have four meetings. What, the way we have it now is that we could have only three meetings, which means we kind of cancel one. This way, we have three meetings and we could do another one if we need it. We'll know ahead of time whether we need it, so we could add that. So we're not losing anything on that. And in addressing, if there are a couple of months where it's difficult, we can have, we can actually word it so that we have three meetings. It's just making it, and it, but it makes it all consistent. So we don't, and sometimes we've come up to where we need, need another meeting or we don't need another meeting. It's real, and people have kind of been confused, are you meeting or not? So this, this sets it up so we know we're going to have three meetings and we could have another meeting, but we have plenty of time to, to notice that. And it's, it's not really changing things a whole lot, but it is in making it more efficient. I think a better way to do this, I think. I think a, a better way to do this, and I think the public will have a better rhythm of what, how, how the, the meetings are going than we have now. And, um, we can always, if, if we get into a situation where we need four money, meetings a month, we can do four meetings a month. Uh, but I think this is the, the, the most effective, the clearest, the, uh, think, uh, something for the public is easier to understand and, and, and plan for than the other way we do it now. So I'm all in favor of the proposal.
Thank you for your input. So I have a quick question. Um, will it save us money to?
It will certainly save staff time, I suppose, if you were to equate staff time to money. It will provide for more time to, um, produce other work, um, that the council has put in place.
But you think about the cost of a meeting.
Mm-huh.
Putting a meeting on and all that you said in answer to the Deputy Mayor. So without that fourth, regular fourth meeting, is that going to save the city money?
Yes, via staff resources, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Well, it'll save money if we cancel, but that option exists with either one of these. Right, so that's not really an argument. So my, my point with this is that I'm in favor of keeping the status quo for one simple reason. I think that, um, for transparency reasons, uh, it's the better option. I think it's easier to cancel a meeting than to add a meeting. So I can guarantee you that if we add a meeting, and it is about a topic that someone in our city cares very much about, and they didn't see the notice that there was a meeting that was added, which typically it is not, um, they will see that as the city not being very transparent in the way we conducted that meeting. I say that it is much better off as a council and as a city, if we establish the status quo as we have right now. We have a meeting every Tuesday now with the ability to cancel, uh, when, when, when needed. And then we can, we can save that staff time. But I think it puts residents and businesses of the city in a difficult position of tracking when there might be a new, uh, meeting added. And add, and then at what point do we put out the notice? How do we do that? We, we, I think we ha- we know we have issues, uh, at times getting to all residents, especially those that might have a real keen interest in the topic that might be addressed that evening. I just think we set ourselves up better to be more transparent if we stick with the status quo. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to, uh, defend my argument just a little bit because when I've been on the council longer than some of people here, and it was always four and sometimes five meetings, uh, regularly. And it's only just been recently, in this last year, that we've cut it down to three, maybe four meetings. So we are saving money in production costs, let's put it that way. And so I'm all for that as we have to try to gather, cobble together more funding for other things like human services. And, uh, we have a budget discussion coming up. I'm, if this is something that we've done for a year and it's worked, it's been effective, um, I'm all for it. So any other comments or questions? Councilmember Zahn? And then Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, so I, so I'm going to just maybe reiterate that if we do end up with the alternative, I am concerned about selecting the first three meetings because I think that if we pick the first, second, and the fourth, or the first, third, and the fourth, we don't end up with April, July, and October literally having no meetings for th-, you know, three weeks be- between meetings. That is way too long, I think, for making sure that if an urgent item comes up, and then we end up putting a special meeting in just for that. So I, I hear my colleagues, I, I would say that I'm really torn on this one because I agree with, um, Councilmember Lee and Jer- and Newen House about the fact that, you know, we, we get a lot of feedback about whether we're being visible and transparent and engaging with the community and giving opportunities to give comments. And so although it's been successful for a year, I'm going to say I felt like maybe, looking back, we were the guinea pigs that we, of an experiment we weren't even aware that was being conducted. And I don't know that if we truly talked about, um, whether canceling that many was highly successful because there have been times where we have gotten feedback that we didn't have enough touches on some of the topics that were coming before the council. And so I'm, I'm not sure if, kind of like the Goldilocks factor, whether the porridge is exactly right to have only three per, per month. So I'll just put it out there like that.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to have real good conversation, which would not be if we tried to be efficient and keep the meeting short. I've been on the council for so long, and I feel myself personally, I am not satisfied. You didn't ask me. I just want the opinion. But what process have we had to ask the people if they think that we should change it? I don't think we have done that. That's okay, but I want to have a discussion on the council first. If I can be assured that if I want to have an additional meeting, it will happen. I don't know. I doubt very much if I say I'd like to have an extra meeting. I got to get four votes on the council.
How about this? What is the criteria for adding another meeting?
There are legal requirements around how special meetings are set, and the mayor can call a special meeting, or the majority vote of the council can call a special meeting. The way in all.
A majority of the council.
A majority of the council.
I am not going to get majority.
Or the mayor.
As we see now.
Well, you could be if you talk to everybody.
Yes, that's the problem.
Let's let her finish her.
But we have a conversation now, so let's do it to you, then we can.
Or in all practicality, the way that we handle special meetings is in consultation with the mayor and the city manager and other staff. We tell the mayor when we have content that will support a special meeting or a need or necessity for that special meeting. And then the special meeting is called.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
How often do we have any special meeting called by council members?
Called by a majority vote of the council members?
By a council member. However, how often are we, is a special meeting called by council members?
An individual council member cannot legally call a special meeting.
Because they cannot get the majority council to approve it, to support it. That's the problem. So I, I appreciate talking. I, I know, I appreciate new council members. You don't know how difficult, how challenging it is to force to communicate. We're fully discussed, because prevented by open meeting act, by talking to anything on our own. So this is only for when we can talk. Our public can see us. We can have a good conversation about specific issues. We have a real dialogue. Without this, we don't have a dialogue. If that's the case, we're not going to be really transparent. We're not going to have the discussion to hear everybody's opinion based on information we get, we share together. That's important. The decision made with people's dialogue conversation on the issue, it's important. So.
Okay, thank you for your input.
I, if I can make a motion if any council member, then we can have a special meeting. I'm happy to do that. That's the next part. Otherwise, I feel that we are not acting on behalf of.
I have a feeling that motion's not going to fly, but do you want to try?
That's the point.
Would you like to amend the motion to say that?
If it's not flying, why would I want to amend? No, no, I'm just asking. Don't, I don't want to waste my time, right?
I, I don't think so, but.
Oh, okay, I won't make a motion. The motion is.
You'd have to amend the motion on the table that's already.
Oh, oh, I see, to say that any council member can request.
You'd like to amend.
Okay. All right?
I think he's asking to amend the motion to include that any one council member, without the vote of the majority, could, I think it's illegal, Conrad, but anyway, could ask for a special meeting.
Mayor, may I?
There, yes, thank you.
Yes, could you?
Please. By, by state law.
A special meeting must be called either by the mayor or by a majority of the council.
Which is what Charmaine told us.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll let that go. Okay, well, it is illegal, Conrad.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Stokes, and then whoever else wants to jump in. And we do have an executive session after this, so, um.
I just want to point out that actually, uh, we're, we're talking about things that aren't, aren't real in a sense of, we, we're not, we haven't kicked off a meeting, uh, that ruined anything. We have gone through this for a year, and actually, gone through this many times in the past as well, where we decide we don't need to have a meeting at a certain time. And the, the way it's set up right now, we could do that every week. We could say we don't want to have a fourth meeting. We just vote for it. So this is, this is making it a lot more effective. And if there are, we can also, well, I, I think it makes it more effective. It's what we've been doing. The number of people who come down here and complain about not having four meetings is maybe not, I don't even have enough fingers, uh, too many fingers on one hand to do that. The public gets, we do, we have conversations with them. It's really important to have a meeting. We'll have a meeting. Uh, I think we're, I don't know. Anyhow, I think what we're, let's do this. If it has problems, we can always come back and take another look at it. But it is an effective way to do it. I think the, the public will appreciate knowing that basically we don't have a meeting that night, but we might have one. People are interested in coming down for that, and it's nothing different. Um, and, uh, I think it'll work fine.
Okay, Council, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Do you have any, so Councilmember Zahn bring these three meetings at the beginning of the month, and then for some months, because of the Tuesday of, that become the fifth Tuesday of that month, we have a long period of time with no meeting. Uh, do, I share that concerns. Do you have any recommendation or any thoughts on that?
So I would say that during the months of August and December, the council does operate on a number of weeks' schedule where there are no meetings. So we do, we do look at the content, and we do look at when there aren't meetings. And we try and space the content out so that there isn't a need for some special meeting in between those break periods. That doesn't mean that there won't be a reason for a special meeting at some point. To Councilmember Zahn's point, if we were to do a first, third, fourth, Tuesday, uh, we, we are here as staff to support the meetings as you see fit. Um, I don't have a strong objection to doing a first, third, fourth, or some other alternative to the first three meetings. Um, we would, we would figure out how to handle that and how to support that.
I feel like we're guessing on what is best for the community, honestly, at this point. And so I almost feel like, do we need to have some kind of a community outreach and to understand how the community actually feels about this? And are we going to make our decision based on that information?
So, um, we are, again, happy to take whatever direction the council would like to provide us tonight. We will continue to support the meetings, whether it's four meetings or three meetings. We could, we could reach out to the community and have conversations about four meetings versus three meetings. Um, these are really your meetings, so we are here to support them as you see fit.
Or the, skipping the second one, that just seems very confusing for most people. Well.
To help you through the discussion tonight, um, remaining at status quo, um, if you do not want to provide us any direction to make a change, the status quo is four meetings per month, and we would continue to look at, uh, the need for those four meetings. And if there is that need, we keep the four meetings on the calendar. If there isn't, um, and we don't have the content to support those meetings, then we end up cancel.
Right.
Canceling a meeting. But status quo is fine.
I can make a mon- I can make an amendment, can I?
Uh, yes.
We can keep status quo, except we have one meeting, a study session. Have a good council discussion on any substantive issue.
Is there a second? Okay, that motion fails. Um, I think we'll, I honestly, I have to be honest with you, I'm conflicted myself, having heard everybody's comments on this. Um, I'm just expressing my thoughts here, John, for a minute. So, um, uh, I'm, I, I'm conflicted. Uh, we have a motion on the table. Uh, we can vote on that and see where it goes. And, um, any other comments or questions? The motion is to change it to, um, three meetings a month.
With, but with the possibility of a.
Of course, yes, absolutely. We could have two special meetings in a month. Can meet as much as we need to.
And so I'm just trying to understand what, what's the conflict now of, uh?
It's, it's really like tomatoes, tomatoes, to be honest with you. But it's, um, it's like, do we stay with the status quo, which is we expect four meetings a month, but when we don't need them, we drop off one? And we've been doing that on a regular basis for a year. Or do we switch and say, we're going to aim for three meetings a month, and if we need an extra one or two, we'll add it on?
I think that's one. I personally think that's something that is more, uh, uh, open to the public to say that this is what we're doing, instead of just kind of doing it.
It's a little more reliable.
I think that going out to the public is, so maybe we'll get five people or ten people to come down and, you know, and talk about it, but it's, I think the public will be fine. Uh, we will set it up, and it, it's, we're, we're spending an awful lot of time on this when we, we're doing something to be more effective.
We have different opinions on the bias.
I'm just, it's my opinion I'm giving.
Okay, so I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Councilmembers on?
Yeah, you know.
Yes, for me, what I keep thinking about is we're changing over to Tuesday, starting in April. We could continue with the status quo for some period of time and monitor, because we do have our comp plan, we've got a bunch of the stuff that's coming. And if even amongst this period with a lot of things going on, because we'll be getting into the budget cycle, we're finding that actually three meetings a month satisfies our needs, it gives us time to evaluate whether we're doing first, third, and fourth, first, second, and fourth, whatever that looks like functionally. And so then, when we actually pivot, it will, we will have had a bit more, um, buy-in and anchoring, because I, I do have to say that, although I know you brought that up about last year. I, I don't know that we actually had had a conversation around that. And again, I do feel like there were a couple of discrete topics where, um, we did get asked about, seems like there was insufficient touches, so. So I, that would be actually my recommendation, is that we, if we want to think about doing this, we don't do it right now.
Okay. Councilmember Newen House?
Thank you. Um, I like that idea. I think it's got validity to it. My, my, my issue with this whole thing is just the consistency. Um, I don't know about my colleagues, but when they ask me what our meetings are, it's a lot easier to say every Monday night or every Tuesday night versus, well, some months it's the first, third, and fourth week, but, uh, but then additionally, we might call an extra meeting as well. Um, I think that message gets a little convoluted at times. Um, yes, we're probably, um, over, overanalyzing this to a certain extent, but I think the simplicity and consistency of our meetings, again, it's, it's easier to, I think, cancel than it is to add a special, uh, a meeting. And then I'm just concerned about the outreach and people finding out in time. If a special meeting is called, and it's of importance to them, that they don't know about it because they, um, that's not their understanding of the, of the cadence of the meeting. Thank you.
And I'll just say, I, I think Councilmember Zahn's argument is very strong, and, um, it is a big change already to change everything to Tuesday. There's nothing that says we can't continue on, and, and the comp plan being in this year is unique. Um, so, uh, we could either take a vote right now, or we could actually, um, we could take this off the table, could we not?
You can withdraw the motion.
We could withdraw the motion.
Yes. So, and we would be happy to support what Councilmember Zahn was suggesting. And it is a big change to just change the day of the meetings from Mondays to Tuesdays, so we could take some time and normalize and stabilize with that. Um, and continue to collect the data and bring it back to council.
Yeah. So is there a desire to take this off the table, or do we want to take a vote? Anybody want to take it off the table? Councilmember Lee?
There's already a motion. We can just vote on it and go along with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So nobody in- interested in taking it off the table?
I, I am aligned with taking it off the table. I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
Okay, do we vote on that?
You, technically, the motion belongs to the body now, so yes, you would need to make a motion to withdraw.
I make a motion to withdraw the current motion that we have.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
There we go. All right, so we've got something, oh, okay, so in the packet, wait a minute, we're not done yet, excuse me. Uh, in the packet is our Intergovernmental Affairs Monthly Update. It's, it's stellar reading, so I encourage all of you to get in the packet and read about all the work that our staff are doing to abd- excuse me, to advocate for the council and for the council legislative agenda. Um, now we're going to adjourn to executive session, and we're not going to adjourn. We are going to go into executive session, and when we're done, I will come back and adjourn. But, uh, it'll take about twenty minutes, and I'm not expecting to see any of you here when I come back, so have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, great.